Moving to the agenda now, members. First of all, apologies for absence. Could I ask the Chief Executive, Debbie Barnes, to report any apologies for absence, please? Debbie?
Thank you very much. Good morning. We've received apologies from councillor Bowles, councillor Carter, councillor Danny, councillor Davies, councillor Gibson, councillor Griggs, councillor Hague, councillor Hassan, councillor King, councillor Martin, councillor Matthews, councillor Nutman, councillor Parkin, councillor Perrott and Williams, councillor Smith, councillor Taylor, councillor Wright and councillor Marfleet. Thank you.
Point of order.
Carry on councillor Lee.
All four of our questions were to councillor Davies because we did rather expect him to be at this council meeting. Given that he's not, we'd like to ask them of different councillors, please, and still have our questions. Thank you.
Accepted. Thank you. Moving on then to item two, declarations of councillors' interests. Are there any declarations? None seen. Thank you. Moving to item three, the minutes of the meeting of the county council held on the 13th of December 2024. I ask that the minutes of the meeting of the county council held on that date be approved as a correct record and signed by the chairman. All in favour? Anyone against? Any abstentions? You got the extension? And Jackie? Thank you very much. Item four, chairman's announcements. Since the last meeting of the council, I have continued to represent the county council and carry out civic engagements. Some are very enjoyable, especially the Burns Night, even had a wee tiranet in. Sorry, I'll explain that to anybody after. I'd like to thank the vice-chairman, councillor William Gray, for deputising for me when I've been unable to attend some of the engagements. It was a particular highlight when I welcomed social and political science students from the University of Lincoln when they held a model United Nations General Assembly as part of their international relations programme here in this, here in this very chamber. It was the 18th time the Lincoln Model United Nations has run in collaboration with the county council and epitomises the long-running and successful partnership between the university and the county council. A complete itinerary of all the civic engagements are available with the civic officer on request. Moving on then to statements, announcements by the leader and members of the executive. Does the leader or any executive councillor wish to make a statement? Where's the leader gone? Okay. No statements. We're moving now to item six, which are the questions to the chairman, the leader, executive councillors and chairman of committees and subcommittees. In so far as it presents, prevents the asking of questions at the annual budget meeting, I move that the council procedure rule 10.2 be suspended for the duration of item six on the agenda. Do I have a second there?
I'd like to second that, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Gray. Can we now vote on the temporary suspension to the council procedures rule? All in favour, please show? Anyone against? Any abstentions? That is carried. I'm anxious to allow a grude spread of questions across the chamber within the time allocated. I intend to allow 45 minutes for questions. I'm expecting councillors to be disciplined because of the time available. When invited to ask their question, councillors should press the button on their microphone to make it live and press it again when they have finished speaking. Moving to questions then. Question one is from councillor Tom Dyer to councillor Martin Hill, OBE. Tom?
Thank you very much, Chairman. Teams has just opened up over my question. Start again. Thank you very much, Chairman. The leader of the county council is aware of how important it is that this council delivers the North Hycam Relief Road, as we and the previous government promised. The new government's decision to pause the funding and thus leaving both this council and my residents is nothing short of a betrayal. In a recent survey that I carried out across Waddington and Hycam East, 95% of my residents support the prospect of delivering the North Hycam Relief Road. The silence and uncertainty does not, should not continue and it needs to conclude. Can the leader of the council please write to the Secretary of State for Transport outlining the importance of delivering this project and requesting that the government provides the council and indeed my residents with the certainty that they deserve? Thank you.
Councillor Hill?
Thank you councillor Dyer. And obviously I'd welcome, and I know you've been a strong advocate of getting this very important road delivered. And I think you're doing an excellent job on behalf of your residents. So it is very disappointing because under the old government, there was a, it was clear that the funding was available to a substantial amount of money, over £100 million, I seem to recall, was going to be made available. So this very important link, South Hycam Relief Road, will actually complete, the Ring Road in Lincoln, will be completed. And unfortunately, the, well, the new government came in and that all these schemes were put on hold. And at the moment, that is still the situation. And we've asked numerous times as to, you know, where, what is the situation? And I think over £20 million has already been spent of government money doing all the necessary preparatory work for this, this road. And it is very disappointing, what, seven or eight, nine months into this new government, they still have not found it able, been able to announce whether or not this scheme will go ahead. So yes, I'm very happy to write again to the Secretary of State for Transport to say, look, and the Treasury, really, some decisions need making on some of these schemes. And very disappointing, the new government seems to not be able to make lots of decisions and kick cans down the road, which is a very uncertain situation for the many people who are in hold on waiting for whether this will happen or not. So yes, the answer is yes. And thank you for your question.
Thank you. Next question is from councillor Debbie Armiger to councillor Richard Davies. Now councillor Richard Davies obviously isn't here and neither is his second-in-command due to illness. So councillor Hill, would you like to take the message? So councillor Armiger, over to you.
Thank you, Chair. The state of footpaths in Park Division, including the prevalent, sorry, of potholes and the limited number of drop curbs poses significant challenges to all pedestrians, particularly those with disabilities. As a disabled resident myself, I can speak firsthand to the appalling conditions of many paths in my division. Given that these paths are crucial for accessibility and safe pedestrian movement, what priority does the county council place on footpath maintenance compared to road maintenance? What specific measurable action will the council take to address the current state of disrepair, improve accessibility through the provision of more drop curbs and ensure the long-term maintenance of footpaths in Park Division? Thank you.
Councillor Hill?
Thank you. I do know, I mean, I can't give you the exact detail, but there is a specific sum being set aside by Highways Department specifically for footways, which are a technical term for them. So there is, I don't know the figure off the top of my head, but it's several million pounds. And certainly I know members in many divisions, including mine, have had their footways upgraded. In terms of drop curbs, there is a process whereby people or indeed councillors can actually apply to have them put in. There is of course a policy and the policy basically is it needs to be for, not just for one property, it has to be for, in which case the property will have to pay for it themselves. But if it's more in a, for a common good, then the council will pay. But certainly more money has been put into, to the footway programme, which I believe will carry on in future years. So your, your schemes will, as long as you've applied, your schemes will be on the list.
Okay. Next one is from councillor Phil Delks to councillor Martin Hill, OBE.
Yes, I do. Good morning. Good morning all, Mr Chairman. At this of councillor Hill, we're now aware that as leader of this authority, you were one of three leaders who signed a letter to the government last month in which you said you were open to the election scheduled for May not going ahead. And which, in which you talked about, quote, "our preferred proposal for two unitary authorities for Greater Lincolnshire". I'm sure you saw BBC Look North last night, reported that the leader of North East Lincolnshire has now apologised and written another letter to the government saying his council does not endorse the contents of the letter he signed and accepting that he should have consulted more widely before sending it. May I respectfully ask councillor Hill if you will be following councillor Jackson's example? Thank you.
No, I won't be following councillor Jackson's example. And I follow the wishes of this council in all these matters. And I'll get into the detail, but clearly there was consultation. The letter actually was to the three leaders. So technically, the three leaders could have just answered it as they so wish. But I actually consulted colleagues and actually informed opposition members of what the likelihood of this would be. So I will not be apologising. I do think actually the new Labour government has made it clear that wishes to abolish county and district councils. And when we have a mayor combined authority, there is a strong case that do you really want a mayor combined authority, a county and a district? And when we consulted on this back in 2016, I believe, most people are actually in favour of the proposal to have a mayor combined authority. But a lot of them said, well, this, there's too much bureaucracy. You don't need all these extra councils. So I know I will not be apologising. We have a firm view, what should be the best way forward. And the government criteria, of course, is for a minimum of 500,000 population for these unitaries. Population of Greater Lincolnshire is 1.1 million. So you don't need to be Einstein to work out that that probably equals, a minimum of 200, 500,000 equals two unitaries. And I think personally, that's where we're going to get to. In concert, we're talking to district council colleagues and we're meeting Ashley, councillor Baxter and others with his district hat on on Monday to see if there is a consensus of a way forward. The government has invited us to put proposals in by the 21st of March. This council will be meeting on the 21st of March. We will have a debate as to what our views are in terms of the proposal we've put forward. So that's where we stand.
Thank you. Next question is from councillor Adam Stokes to councillor Richard Bootroyd.
Thank you, Chairman. I was just wondering if we could have an update on the current situation with the Deepins Leisure Centre, please?
Thank you for the question. We had a meeting this week where sadly it became apparent that the CIC couldn't take their proposal forward. We, as a county council, remain committed to trying to find a solution. Obviously, we've got some red lines. We need, we can't allow the building to stand in its current state for, for much longer. And we clearly need to get the lease signed with the academy school, as this is long overdue. So we're gonna hopefully work with partners going forward, see, see where we can go from here. But, but it certainly looks like the CIC and the academy couldn't agree terms to, to move forward with the current proposal. And we're, you know, SK had a doubt with their funding as well regards to trying to, they, they felt that because the proposal had changed, they'd have to go back to their council as well. They'd felt that they probably couldn't get that through. So sadly, the deal fell apart. So we're left with, with the point of probably knocking, well, knocking the building down and handing the lease, getting the lease signed by the school. Now, where partners can go after that, I suppose, is, is up to them really. Thank you.
Okay. Next question is from councillor Neil Murray to councillor Martin Hill in place of Richard Davies.
Thank you, Chairman. You'll know about Brayford Wharf North and this side of the Brayford Pool, Chair. It's a really lively area. People go in the pet shows, they go to the pub, and they go to the restaurant. And it's a really nice, busy area. The only problem is, it's become a bit of a car park. And I can't understand why. One Saturday night, for example, there'll be a guy giving tickets out and there'll be nobody parked there. But not last Saturday, the one before, I counted 20 cars parked where they shouldn't be. It's supposed to be present, um, pedestrian friendly. And they were parked, they weren't picking up and leaving down. And I'll just, I've had complaints from residents who live near the pool. And I wonder if we could do a little bit more patrolling?
Obviously, don't know the details, but certainly they'll be passed on. If you could email those to either myself or Richard Davies, I'm sure he will take it up. And if there is an issue of inconvenient parking as a council, we'll see what we can do. Thank you.
Next question is from councillor Richard Cleaver to councillor Martin Hill, OBE.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Hill, do you agree that for any local government reorganisation to be optimal, then where any new authorities might inherit part of the existing county boundary, the boundary may need to be moved in certain places? Where the current county boundary runs very close to our towns, it often causes problems with issues like local planning, healthcare provision and bus services, to name but a few. And it should be properly reviewed as part of the organisation process. Will you therefore please ensure, when preparing this council's response to the Westminster Government on local government reorganisation, that due consideration is given to the need to redraw our county boundaries in some places? Thank you.
Thank you. As I previously said, obviously, there will be a full debate of this council, all this council on Friday, the 21st of May. Sorry, yeah, March indeed, not May. So obviously, members, all, all members will have an opportunity to put their way forward. And just to remind members of the criteria, it's not just the 500,000. There is the, obviously, protection of the mayor combined authority boundaries. There's also using district councils as building blocks, whatever that means, and try to minimise disruption to services. So those are the four main criteria. So personally, I don't think the criteria is, is in any way supportive of trying to go beyond what are the mayor, will become the mayor combined authorities very shortly. So I think it's certainly an option, but my own personal view, you could put that option forward. But according to the criteria the government have published, that will be not the case. I think there is an issue where, in terms of using district councils as building blocks, which I think would be supportive. But if I take, for example, the village, villages just north of Lincoln, if, say, there was a north and south unitary, and I'm not prejudging this, but that's a possibility, that would mean the villages just outside Lincoln would actually be not part of the same unitary authority that Lincoln are. So I'd hope there would be some flexibility within, within the mayor combined authority boundary. But I personally, I think it's a non-runner. And I think the government's view is, having set up the mayor combined authorities, they want them to, to actually get on and deliver what they're doing. When we have the combined authority on the 6th of March, and then of course the mayor coming along on the 1st of May. So I think we can have the debate. But I really see no point in putting suggestions forward, which we already know will not find favour.
Thank you. Next question is from councillor Tom Ashton to councillor Colin Davies.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Councillor Davies, with the Grimsby to Walpole pylons due to clash, crash through the communities which I represent, will you continue to support my campaign to recognise the fens as a national landscape and give our big skies county the policy protection that it needs?
Thank you councillor Ashton for the question. And the answer bluntly is yes. Obviously, we are very aware these pylon proposals are devastating for communities from all the way from Grimsby to Walpole and everywhere, they are passing through. Quite honestly, the impact on our landscapes from what is, I would consider a retrograde industrialised proposal dating back to the 1940s and 50s, rather than planning for the future properly in terms of how we integrate new technologies into a grid system that supports protecting our countryside whilst delivering power to the south. You know, I've said many times, we should be following the line of an offshore grid. We should make sure everything is undergrounded that needs to come on shore. And we should not be wrecking and trashing the countryside of Lincolnshire on behalf of anybody. So yes, I do support what you're proposing.
Thank you. Next question is from councillor Karen Lee to councillor Martin Hill in place of councillor Davies.
Thank you, Chairman. My question is about parking enforcement. And I suspect you could transplant this question and put it in any number of different places. We've got two local schools. There's Ermine Academy and Our Ladies School. And they're both close to Our Ladies Church on the Ermine East. And the church very kindly offer us the use of the car park at picking up and dropping off time. But of course, there are always drivers that won't do that because it's much easier to park on the zigzag markings and closer to the school. That makes it dangerous for the kids who will want to like just run out all over the place. And my, my question really is, we have had some enforcement, and this isn't a criticism of the enforcement team, but I'm mindful that we've got a relatively small number of people to cover a pretty huge area in Lincolnshire and quite a lot of problems, even, even the, the thing that Neil's spoken about as well. And I wondered if going forward, if we could look at recruiting some extra officers, just so that the enforcement could actually be a little bit more regular and a bit more effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, if it's a roadside issue, enforcement, of course, is a matter for the police. And as we know, that doesn't happen. There, I do know, there's a lot of work goes on. You're right, nearly every school in the county, even when the, the school makes arrangements for parents to park sensibly and maybe in, and have a school walking bus or something, some parents will still just drop out, ignore the, the advisory zigzag lines and just drop the child off. So it is, and I know a lot of head teachers and are constantly writing in my patches, the same, writing to parents to say, look, can you please? And sometimes there are a small minority who don't obey. So obviously, we have done a lot of work. And as you probably remember, we have had CCT outside certain schools to improve the situation, which it does when the CCT is there, but then when it goes. The issue about all of this is actually the enforcement isn't there. And all we can rely on really is making sure that we get parents to try and be, all parents to be as, as cautious as, as they possibly can be. And we can work with advisory. And I know there's a lot of support that councillor Davies has put in to make sure schools are supported. But it is an ongoing problem. And, you know, indeed, where there are, even if you go off a dedicated car park, then there comes issues of safety because parent, people are backing into potentially children. It's not an easy issue. It's something we do put a lot of time and effort into trying to resolve. But without police enforcement, it becomes very much a more challenging prospect.
Thank you. Next question is from councillor Marion Overton, MBE, to councillor Martin Hill, OBE.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Martin Hill, you have done a good job raising the issue of the pylons. But I'm also very concerned, as you know, about the solar industry, which is marching over our countryside, paid for out of high electricity bills. And that is of a concern to every man, woman and child in this county. If the new body, the mayor, is going to be responsible for infrastructure, how will they, how will that body consult with councillors and public in order to get better solutions? Thank you.
Well, obviously, the, the proposal is for the mayor, mayor combined authority to take, take ownership of strategic planning. So we'll go back to the old countywide planning. So I think my understanding is the, in terms of infrastructure and planning, it will given down to the mayor combined authority. And then the mayor combined authority will consult with the, whoever the planning authorities are currently, the district councils. Of course, with the, these pylons and, and large scale solar, it's not going to be the mayor, it's not going to be the councils have any say in this whatsoever. We have a government that is just obsessed with foisting all this lot on us. We'll have no say. And the government, as we speak, are creating plans where they can just push through this stuff. And as you're well aware, already, the Secretary of State has agreed several massive solar farms in our county without any regard to what the local people think. So I hear what you're saying. And I think we will, the one benefit to having a mayor is we will also, in addition to what the councils say, we'll have another voice, we'll hopefully see some common sense with the government. Because as Colin, councillor Davies, has said many times, if we're not careful, we'll end up with the whole of the county being industrialised. We, I think we've got to accept there will be infrastructure, but on a, on a reasonable scale, which doesn't compromise the whole of our rural area. And thank you for the question. I agree, I agree with your sentiment.
Thank you. Next question is from councillor Paul Skinner to councillor Colin Davies.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Davies, could you please provide a further update to council on the progress of section 19 investigation work? And also any planned schemes that have been prepared to support the communities across Lincolnshire? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Skinner for the question. Just to update council, I can now confirm that all the section 19 investigations which were commissioned after storms Babette and Hank have now been completed. This has resulted in 195 separate reports, which have been signed off by our floods and water management team. It's identified a significant number of actions for all the risk management authorities, which includes ourselves, the EA, Anglian Water and the IDBs. As the lead local flood authority, we will oversee the responses of all these agencies to the actions required of them. And these will be continually reported back into the flood and water management scrutiny committee. For LCC, we have over 500 actions which fall into two broad categories, advice and education of residents and physical interventions. We have a programme of work to address both these broad activities, the broad categories of activity. Ahead of the section 19 work being concluded, we had already start instigated the bringing forward of projects for delivery. And this has resulted now in 13 projects being progressed to both delivery and on ground. And in some instances, in advance of the initial feasibility and modelling to enable new projects to be delivered. As council will recall, we put £6 million last year into budgets to actually address some of the challenges around flooding in our county. I have to advise council, and very disappointingly so, that after the recent events in January, government has not been forthcoming with any further monies to support communities and residents who've been impacted by flooding. So that is a significant challenge going forward. And I will be writing again to government, reminding them that for small investments by them, we can actually make a difference. We've helped over 200 properties to be better protected because of the money that was made available by government in terms of the property resilience grants. It's very disappointing that no money has been made available by government to help the residents. I know particularly in areas for the leader, for councillor Baxter, for, you know, people in South Castrivan, it has been a very devastating period at the beginning of January, and they need to be supported also. So that's where we are. We've got those reports done. And we have obviously got the section 19 team now looking at the events of January. And those reports will also be progressed as quickly as humanly possible. And obviously, we all need to pray that we don't have any further events that impact on the residents of our county.
Thank you. Next question is from councillor Kevin Clark to councillor Martin Hill in place of councillor Davies.
Thank you, Chairman. City of Lincoln council have applied for a resident parking scheme from Bootham Avenue down to Belgate. I've been informed the scheme now is sitting with the county council. I don't expect you to have the details off on hand, but could you review this and share them with me? That's if the scheme is to go ahead. Thank you.
Obviously, I don't know the answer to your direct question, but certainly, as you're aware, when these schemes go forward, there is then a local referendum virtually on the householders in that speech. So certainly, I'll get councillor Davies to get back to you to see where this, it's been, presuming it's been requested by yourself. And obviously, it will go through a process. And if it's deemed to be a viable scheme, it will go forward. But the answer to your question, councillor Clark, is yes, we'll get the answer to you and give you a timescale as, well, first of all, whether it's considered viable. And secondly, timescale of consultation.
Thank you. Next question is from councillor Ashley Baxter to councillor Wendy Bockett.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning. More than a decade ago, when my father was in his last years, he had professional carers come in every day. He was fascinated by the number of different- He was fascinated by the number of different people from different nations who visited each day to care for him in his old age. Sadly, my mum is now in poor health, and each day, her carers visit, and everyone that I've seen so far has been African. Anyone who has visited the hospital or the doctors in recent years knows how many people born overseas, including a thousand from India, who are working for the NHS in Lincolnshire, are keeping the NHS and adult social care functioning. As the executive member for adult care and public health, do you agree that adult care and the NHS in Lincolnshire would be in an even worse crisis than it already is, were it not for the hard work and commitment of people born outside the UK, and their contributions should not only be acknowledged but celebrated?
Thank you councillor Baxter. Well, I too have a mother who actually has carers come in twice a day, and they are often from African nations, not always. We have them come from Boston, we have them come from Lincoln as well, so they're not all that. But yes, I do agree with you over the, I don't think it's over the last 10 years, to be quite honest, I think it's over many years that we've had different nations come to our fantastic NHS services, and they want to come and learn from us. Doctors, nurses get fantastic training here. So yes, it is something that they do hard work, but so do our own English and Irish and Scottish and everybody else that works here. But the African ladies that come to my mum certainly are hardworking, and they celebrate living in England and working here, and they work very hard.
Thank you. Next question is from councillor Rob Kendrick to councillor Colin Davy.
Thank you, chairman. Actually, the question I was going to ask has been raised already in terms of NSIPS and solar farms, but it's something that's very, of great concern to residents in my division. Whether in rural, we have the potential of having a massive solar farm, although I shouldn't really call it farm, I should think we should call it solar factory because it is industrialisation. And I've never encountered so much opposition, there's overwhelming opposition in my division from residents to this proposal. And I'd just like to know from the executive councillor, what moves are being made to counter this? I appreciate that for NSIPS, the decision rests with the secretary of state, and has been mentioned earlier by the leader, he has approved them without regard to local considerations this, in the last year. So what action can we take to at least try and counter these proposals? Thank you, chairman.
Thank you councillor Kendrick, and I shall try and elaborate on some thoughts I have. Firstly, we have our Lincolnshire Energy Conference taking place on Tuesday at the university. It is now absolutely sold out, so we're expecting a lot of people, and it's going to be a great debate with fantastic speakers, not just from the UK but internationally as well, who are going to talk about the challenges around energy and actually how we get to affordability and sustainability and secure energy. Some of the challenges we face, you know, on the economy in particular, with the announcement this week, after promises that energy bills will come down, they're going to go back up again in April. So, you know, we know that our businesses are really struggling. We also know that our landscapes are going to be changed forever by some of these proposals. Five giant solar farms already consented, without any regard to the representations of this authority or local communities, is quite honestly a disgrace. And quite honestly, going forward, the challenge we're going to have with pylons and infrastructure are equally going to be a challenge. I mean, I am going to meet with the president of National Grid, who's speaking at the conference on Tuesday, and with the chief planner from NESSO, and to make the case for Lincolnshire and to think differently. Government can have its targets, but they will not deliver them on time, on budget, and they will certainly not deliver the outcomes that our secretary of state desires. We are not going to roll over, and I'm very clear, we will fight. Lincolnshire will fight, our communities will fight to protect what they hold dear. So on pylons and infrastructure, we don't support it, we're very clear, it's an offshore grid, bury the cables if you have to come onshore, we're not going to have industrialisation of our countryside. On giant solar, I've said this many times in the chamber, not on best and most versatile agricultural land, on branfield sites, on rooftops, on commercial buildings, on car parks, all fine. We put them on our buildings, we're putting it on our farm buildings now. That's what we should be doing. If the secretary of state wants to be taken seriously, why hasn't the government legislated to make every new home zero carbon? Why aren't they insisting on solar on every new house build? You know, that's what we should be doing. And as regards onshore wind, you know our position on that, we don't support it, so we won't support any applications that come forward. I think there's another concern that's been raised by members individually with me is around anaerobic digestion plans. I'm very clear, the same premise about protecting good agricultural land for food security is important, and we should not therefore be growing crops for energy on good agricultural land. So, you know, we need to think about that very carefully, and about residents who are going to be impacted by huge numbers of lorry movements, et cetera.
Councillor Davy, just a moment, no, you can stay there, but councillor Neil Murray wants to make a point of order.
Thank you, chair, it's a point of information and a point of order. Councillor Davy says that the energy conference is sold out. Are we allowing people who don't agree with your views?
Yes.
Well, why have I just got an email from someone saying that they've been told they can't go? That's the information I wanted.
Send it over to me councillor Murray, and I will have a look at it. Thank you.
You want to conclude?
Yeah, no, I'll conclude there. I mean, I think we have real challenges in the county, our landscape is under threat, and our communities are under threat from some of these proposals. Grand large-scale industrialisation of Lincolnshire is not acceptable, and government has not made the case why we should take this. It is not in the national interest, it is someone else's interest, it certainly isn't in ours.
Thank you very much. Just for information before I ask for the last question, questionnaire, if you want to make a point of order or a point of information, stand, and then I will address it, but waving your hand doesn't count, okay? Thanks for that. Finally, the last question is from councillor Charlotte Vernon to councillor Martin Hill, OBE. Charlotte.
Thank you, chairman. My question is to the leader. Councillor Hill, I know you will be aware that some safety improvements have begun on the A1 within my division. As all councillors will be aware, the safety of the A1 is something I've raised many times since I was elected on behalf of residents in my Colstworth rural division. Whilst the improvements currently taking place are welcome, there is still much more that needs to be done. I'm aware that the A1 falls under the responsibility of National Highways, not the county council, but could I please seek assurance from councillor Hill that he will continue to push for further safety measures to be implemented on the A1, particularly within the Colstworth rural division that I represent, where residents' lives are affected on an almost daily basis by issues on this stretch of road? Thank you.
Yes, thank you for the question, and as councillor Vernon is well aware, I know she's doing a tremendous amount of work to try and get this issue resolved, as all councillors, county councillors, and other councillors who represent communities alongside the A1. So there's been a lot of pressure put, and as she stated, there is now a plan to close some of the central reservations. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure which ones will be closed, but I think we all know the real answer is to upgrade the section of A1 between Doncaster and Peterborough to a much higher standard. As we all also are aware, that nearly every week now, at least once a week, the A1 is closed for accidents or something even worse, which A means a lot of disruption, and B means a lot of traffic is then diverted through the A roads and Granton, Stamford, and another Newark, and other towns across up the P. So it is a very important issue, and we have, I think there have been meetings with numerous transport ministers to get this scheme upgraded in the national scheme of things, and certainly from a regional point of view, I know east Midlands councils are also trying to push this as one of the major schemes which needs addressing. And it has got much, much worse over recent years, and I think the case is becoming unanswerable, and we will make sure that the government, we put it in plans, so in future there will be this total upgrade, so that people not only can travel safely up the A1 from London all the way up to Yorkshire or even Scotland, do means that they will be safer, and also local communities will not be disrupted so much. So thank you for the question.
Thank you. That concludes questions, so we'll now move to item seven, which is the council budget. A report by the deputy chief executive and executive director of resources has been circulated, together with a separate document entitled Council Budget 2025/26. An amendment by the shadow executive has been submitted. I propose to deal with this item as outlined in the Order of Proceedings and have one debate. I therefore move that there be one debate on the executive budget proposals and the amendment by the shadow executive, and therefore that council procedure rules 13.4, 13.6, 13.6b, sorry, 13.6c, 13.6d, 13.6e, and 13.10 be temporarily suspended for the duration of the debate, and the debate takes place as set out in the Order of Proceedings. Do I have a second there?
I'm happy to second that, Mr Chairman.
Thank you, vice chairman. Can we now vote on the temporary suspension to council procedure rules? All in favour, please show? Anyone against? Any abstentions that is carried? I wish to remind members about the rules of debate as set out in 13.5 and 13.9 of the council procedure rules, which have not been suspended. These are set out in paragraphs one and two in the Order of Proceedings. The debate will take the form as set out in paragraphs A to G on pages five and six of the Order of Proceedings. Rule 13.5, when a councillor may speak again, a councillor who has spoken on a motion may not speak again whilst it is the subject of debate, except A, in exercise of a right of reply, B, on a point of order or information, and C, by way of personal explanation. Rule 13.9, right of reply, the mover of a motion has the right to reply at the end of the debate on the motion immediately before it is put to the vote. If an amendment is moved, the mover of the original motion has the right of reply at the close of the debate on the amendment, but may otherwise not speak on it. And the mover of the amendment has no right of reply to the debate on his or her amendment. Councillor Hill, would you like to move the budget?
Thank you, chairman. Sound all right for everybody, just before I get going? Hopefully this year, it'll be a smooth, we remember last year, the microphone was a bit in a funny mood. Okay then, so thank you very much, chairman. So before I move the budget, I have just a few words to say beforehand. I've always been proud of this council's track record of delivering good services and offering value for money for the taxpayer, keeping council tax low and fighting for more funding for our residents, in the true spirit of a well-run Conservative council. As we look forward to the start of spring, we also set our budget for the coming year, and I'd like to thank staff in finance who have supported all this work. With a new government in 2024 came a new financial burdens and even less money for local services. This is against a backdrop of many councils being in severe financial difficulties. Councils are struggling with rising costs and the national economy failing to meet the growth targets despite the Chancellor's promises. The International Monetary Fund says that the UK economy grew by just 0.9% in 2024, having previously forecast 1.1%. And I think recently, we've also had some bad news on inflation, which is already just below 3%, and is forecast now to rise to 3.5%. So I think the backdrop in terms of extra support councils is looking increasingly gloomy. The Chancellor's Autumn Statement included an increase in employers' national insurance contributions, and although we receive some additional funding to partially cover these increased costs for our staff, by our own estimates, this will still leave a gap in funding of about £1.2 million. The impact on our suppliers from their own national insurance contributions will also lead to higher costs for the council, particularly in health and care services. This issue is being totally ignored by this vindictive Labour government. Around the country, six councils have been granted permission to increase council tax this year by more than the maximum 5% without requiring a referendum. One of these is Labour-run Birmingham City Council, who have been allowed to raise council tax by 7.5%, and I think they also were allowed to raise it above the limit last year. But in addition to that, they have received nearly £40 million of additional funding through the government's new recovery grant. We received nothing from this recovery grant. At the same time, we lost £9 million from the rural delivery grant, which we used to receive. So this rural delivery grant has been removed altogether, and the government has now replaced it with something called a recovery grant, which seems mysteriously only ever to go to urban authorities, most of which are under Labour local control. So in effect, this means, for example, while Birmingham's financial mismanagement leading to virtual bankruptcy has been rewarded with increased funding, our own continued sound financial management is not. Back in January, in fact, we were one of the few councils, early few councils, to have their accounts signed off by our external auditors with a clean bill of health. How have we done this? Well, since 2010, we have found over £400 million in efficiency savings, and have taken the necessary decisions early to set this council in a strong financial position compared to many others. We continue to lobby the government for more funding to reflect our specific challenges, particularly around an aging population and around the travel distances to deliver services. There is increasing concern of how fundamental changes to government funding formula will affect us in Lincolnshire in the long term. We can only do what we have always done and focus on what we can control to stay financially sustainable. It does appear, however, there will be a major cultural shift in financial support from rural to urban areas, even though we and many other rural areas are already financially disadvantaged by the current funding formula. During our budget consultation exercise, concerns about the cost of living was the most common theme that emerged from the feedback. Overall, two-thirds of residents supported our proposed increase to council tax of just under 3%. We know that no council tax increase will be popular, but this year particularly, it will be necessary. However, the executive felt it would be unfair to make our residents fill the financial gap from the government's funding reforms. This is why we are recommending a 2.99% increase around the level in fashion, made possible by a windfall from our energy from waste facility last year. And as in previous years, we continue to improve the way we work to save money and support our low-tax approach, improve our back office functions, in turn is releasing savings to support value frontline services. This budget is savings from increasing the efficiency of our customer service centre, as well as maximising the use of technology and reducing unnecessary costs. We're also starting to see savings from reducing our number of offices by 30%. With longer days and warmer temperatures around the corner, can we find anything in our budget to be more hopeful about? Yes, I think we can. In the next financial year, as a council, we will spend £700 million to deliver our planned services. We also plan to invest £346 million into capital or building projects to benefit our residents. In 2025, the county will start to receive more funding from our devolution deal. The government has made it clear that the formation of our mayoral strategic combined authority is the route to future investment in Greater Lincolnshire, as well as more local decision-making. It is a testament to work of the councils that we have achieved such a good devolution deal, and that it was so readily accepted and taken forward quickly by the new government. The £20 million we have already received for capital projects are, for example, a number of highways and investment projects underway, and for this year, the new Greater Lincolnshire Combined County Authority will receive £24 million of investment funding, which is guaranteed for the next 30 years, as well as consolidated transport funding. The combined authority will also be receiving more than £12 million of UK shared prosperity funding for Greater Lincolnshire, plus a plus a capital top-up of an additional two point six million to support the development of local growth plans. These are incredibly positive steps to forward in securing a better future for Lincolnshire. As the largest area of council spending, with a gross budget of three hundred and ninety five million pounds in adult care, we paved around eight thousand beds in long-term and short-term care settings. Financial possessions on providers are continuing to increase due to the combination of a national living wage inflation and the additional national insurance contributions. Over the next year, adult care will be spending nearly twenty million pounds more across all services, including covering the six point seven percent increase in the national living wage. Our budget also needs to meet the anticipated increase in demand for adult social care. We are seeing an increase in demand for services amongst working age adults, an increase between three and six percent per year, particularly for mental health services. There is an increased focus on prevention, with seventy percent of the public health grants allocated to preventative health services for adults, including the integrated lifestyle service, screening and immunisations, NHS health checks, and the wellbeing service. In the coming year, we plan to conduct over three hundred visits to care homes to reduce infection risks and safeguard vulnerable adults and individuals. Additionally, we will support more than four and a half thousand carers, demonstrating our commitment to providing them with essential resource and assistance. We also seek to support victims of domestic abuse in the county, where there is a need to provide a safe accommodation, providing several specialised services to meet the needs of children and those with complex needs. Across children's service, we'll be spending ten million pounds more than last year. This reflects cost pressures and increased demand for children's social care faced not just by ourselves, but all councils across the country who deliver children's services. More funding has been allocated to meet these challenges, include increased payments to our much valued foster carers. Around a hundred and ten million pounds will be spent on children's social care this year, protecting our most vulnerable children and young people and enhancing their opportunities. This year's budget includes eleven million pounds for SEND support, S E N D support, and additional funding to support the rise in request for that service. Thirteen million pounds of capital funding will be used to increase the S E N D capacity in Lincolnshire schools, which is why we are one of the few councils now who still have not got overspend, but it is in this area, but it is becoming very increasingly likely that will happen in future. And in addition, more than six million pounds will be spent on supportive accommodation and services for those leaving care, and four and a half million pounds on targeted support for young people. The council recognises how important it is to help our key businesses sectors, our key business sectors to expand, creating high-quality jobs and investment in the county. We have recently committed to invest in this budget twenty million pounds in an economic investment fund, which will be delivered over the next four years and provide three thousand job opportunities across the whole county. This will be used to create business facilities across Grantham, Lincoln and Holbeach that are needed by our world-leading businesses in the advanced manufacturing, defence and agri-food sectors. We have also committed to invest some of the funding into expanding industrial capacity and estates in West Lindsay, East Lindsay and Boston. This is a difficult period for businesses, especially those from our rural areas, and we are receiving more calls from businesses who need help with increasing costs. We have therefore allocated fifty thousand pounds from our contingency budget to fund a year-long service to support rural businesses and their managers and owners in the very difficult times. This programme will start next month. It is clear to see that we put a huge amount of effort into keeping Lincolnshire moving, repairing more than one hundred thousand potholes and rebuilding many miles of roads and footpaths over the last year. Our highways maintenance grant from the Department of Transport this year amounts to sixty point four million pounds, which we have bolstered with a further forty six point two million pounds of council funding. Spending on road maintenance last year was at record levels, and as a result, the condition of our unclassified roads has considerably improved for the second year in a row, whilst we have maintained the condition of our A, B and C roads in a steady state. With this additional funding, I'm pleased to announce that our strategy is working, and fifty seven miles of unclassified roads are no longer classed as network needing maintenance. Comparing Lincolnshire to other authorities, our principal road network is in a better state than the average rural authority. Last year, we completed several major highways improvement projects, including the A sixteen Springfield roundabout in Spalding, Dasart Road in Grantham and Newland and Lincoln. This is on top of building twelve brand-new pedestrian crossings across the county. We've also been able to bring positive change to roads in our coastal area, thanks to the twenty million pounds devolution funding previously mentioned. This has allowed us to completely rebuild Old Roman Bank between Sandilands and Chapel St Leonard's, the eleven oh four between Maywoodthorpe and Mulberry Marsh, and two failing roads in Suttonon Sea. We'll be using the remaining money to rebuild and improve the Netlem Roundabout just outside Lincoln. In twenty twenty five, we're also set to break ground on the two hundred million North Hycam Relief Road, we hope, and that will form the final section of Lincoln's Ring Road. In the coming year, we'll also spend over fourteen million pounds to rebuild some of the A and B roads across the county, including busy sections of the A fifteen and A sixteen. Although much of our budget is spent on delivering services at a large scale, we can't forget that many of our services with smaller budgets are often equally valued by our residents. Our registration service is there at key life events, and our new ceremonies website is transforming our service from a traditional paper-based contract basis into a better, more interactive experience for couples planning their special day. The highly anticipated redevelopment of Lincoln Museum continues to progress well. Working in close collaboration with the specialist museum designers will ensure that we can improve the visitor experience, encourage repeat visits and contribute to the county's visitor economy. In order to accommodate the government's simpler recycling legislation, which aims to standardise the waste collected by all local authorities, we have invested nearly ten million pounds to improve our waste transfer station and to progress the construction of a new one in the Lincoln area. We are progressing well to adopting these stations to accept separate food waste, which will be collected by district councils from April twenty twenty six. Food waste will be treated by anaerobic digestion, producing electricity and fertilizers for use on agricultural land. This will boost the county's recycling rate by up to seven percent. In January, we were reminded of the risk to the county from flooding. You'll remember that following the storms of the previous year, nearly one million pounds was allocated over the last year to carry out an unprecedented number of investigations into the causes of flooding at various locations across the county, which Section nineteen reports, which Councillor Davy referred to earlier. These investigations identify the root causes of flood incidents and, where possible, the action needed to address it from different agencies. To act on these recommendations, we have also invested a further four million pounds of capital funding for a new flood alleviation schemes, such as those at Kirkby-on-Bane and Long Bennington. But we do accept there's always a case for more investment, certainly since the additional flooding we had on the sixth of January. The budget for Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue is now over twenty eight million pounds, increased to allow for a commissioning of a new fire control system, additional legislative requirements, and compensate for the withdrawal of some funding from the Home Office. We've also earmarked more than three million pounds in capital investment to maintain existing equipment and fleet, ensuring our emergency response remains strong. Of course, the spring of twenty twenty five also brings with it our county council elections. This most important democratic process reminds us that we are all here to serve our residents. Before Christmas, the government set out its intentions for widespread reorganisation to abolish two-tier council systems in favour of unitary authorities. Councils were invited to come forward to be considered in the first phase. Perhaps it was no real surprise that Greater Lincolnshire was not chosen to be in this first wave. Although disappointing, we were looking to pursue a more straightforward local government across Greater Lincolnshire at the earliest opportunity. It is clear that one county council, seven district councils, two unitary authorities, town and parish councils, and now a mayoral combined authority is over bureaucratic, complex system for our residents, and I do think I would agree that the government is right to pursue its current course. We have now received from the government the detailed criteria which enable us to put proposals together for a submission, which I referred to earlier. This Conservative Council is yet again providing a financial framework where our services are good or outstanding, and which maintains our council tax as one of the lowest in the county, despite unfair national funding formulas and a large capital programme to show that we have big ambitions for the future of Lincolnshire, whatever the governance arrangements will be in future. So we are very ambitious about the future with this large capital programme, and we will ensure that whoever comes after the county and district councils is able to take advantage of these new arrangements. So with that, Chairman, I'd like to move the recommendations as outlined in the Order of Proceedings, and I understand there will be an amendment to the budget which we'll consider now. Thank you.
Thank you, Leader. Do I have a second there? Councillor Mark Woodburn?
Yes, Mr Chairman, I'm happy to second this motion, and I reserve my right to speak later. Thank you.
Point of order, thank you. I'd just like to pick up the point about whether this is or isn't a Conservative council, and I support much of the proposals that have been going through this council, and most of us here have. But I would not want to think that sixteen councillors representing a hundred and seventy five thousand, a lot of people, I'd say, in this area are being ignored. This council does have people of different thinking, and that is why I think it can be more effective, because we do have different voices at the table. Thank you. A Conservative-led council would be fine.
Do you wish to respond, Councillor Hill?
No, I mean, in the past, I've always made sure that I'd include that it is a Conservative-run council, and I think that's a fair comment in these circumstances. I mean, as is always with the opposition, they are very good at taking credit for when things go well, and also very good at blaming Conservatives when they don't. But, you know, this is all politics, isn't it?
Thank you. We will now move to the shadow executive amendment. Councillor Dilks, would you like to move your amendment?
I'd be delighted to, Mr Chairman. May I thank Councillor Hill? I'm slightly dizzy, so I have to apologise. I'm recovering from a balance problem. We talk about a balanced budget, but forgive me. Thank you. You're very kind, thank you. I do thank you, Councillor Hill, for your presentation of the administration's budget proposals for the coming financial year, and I also thank our financial team for their work and advice on the budget proposals. As current leader of the opposition, I have the privilege of responding to Councillor Hill's speech, and on behalf of the shadow executive, I do intend moving a relatively minor amendment to the proposals that will not add a single penny to council bills, but does have the potential to make a real positive difference to the lives of residents when they most need help, i.e. when their homes and their lives are devastated by floods, like we've seen in Lincolnshire at least three times in the last eighteen months. Councillor Hill announced that despite all the cost pressures and financial uncertainty, and what he called the gloomy financial settlement, the Conservative administration are not asking for the maximum council tax rise today, out of concern for our residents dealing with the cost of living crisis. Now, we all know, of course, don't we, that the cost pressures, challenging finances and government cuts to our core spending power didn't start with the general election last year. That's why before the change of government, Councillor Hill and the Conservative-run administration in this place went for the maximum council tax rise allowed for the current year. This year, sorry, the year before that, the administration also went for the maximum council tax rise, and yes, the same year before that as well. At our budget meeting in twenty twenty three, months after the then Prime Minister Liz Truss crashed the economy, leading to inflation spiralling to double digits, inflation at a forty-year-high, rocketing mortgage rates and the cost of living crisis, I recall residents begging us not to hike council tax to the maximum available, but we did, and in fairness, as I remember, most other councils did too. But if the government settlement to this council is really even more challenging this year than in previous years, we do have to ask, why are the Conservatives not going for the maximum council tax allowed, as they have for the past three years? What's different this year than last year, and the year before that, or the year before that? Could it have anything to do, perhaps, that the campaigning has already started today for the county council elections? And those will be in full flow, of course, when councils' bills drop on the mat. Would anyone be surprised to know that the last time this Conservative administration proposed anything less than the maximum council tax rise allowed was in twenty twenty one, just weeks before the last county council elections? We have to ask ourselves, though, is the two point nine nine the right thing to do? It may be, but I have huge respect for our team of financial experts who advise us on these matters. And guess what? Election or no election, their advice this year is quite clear that we should be going for the maximum rise available. I spent the weekend, actually in bed suffering, but I did read the Budget Book carefully. I think it's about two hundred and thirty pages, really good bedtime reading. But we all have it before us, and I'm sure you've all read it, but there is, and you will have seen, a theme running through it, that we should all consider very carefully before voting through a council tax rise that only provides less than one percent increase to all non-adult social care services. I'm sure you've all read it as I have, but may I gently remind you of a few of the strong hints. I'll just go through a few of these. Paragraph two twenty three, I quote, "The vast majority of the council's increase in core spending power needs to come through increasing council tax by the maximum rate allowed." Next paragraph talks about "the impact of the government changes emphasise the short-term need to maximise council tax." And going for a two point nine percent rise, the Budget Book says, "Lincolnshire may be judged as having more resources than it needs, which could have implications for future grant funding levels. Alongside the council's residual medium-term financial plan deficit position, this provides sufficient justification for maximising the rate of council tax now to ensure the council approaches a potentially challenging period from the best position possible." The book goes on, "It's also important to note, as a result of the increase proposed being lower than comparator authorities are understood to be planning, this council expects to remain in the lowest quartile of county council preset rates. There's a strong possibility that all comparator authorities will go for the maximum increase available." In paragraph three, four, under the key points to note, I quote, "Core spending power includes an assumption that council tax will increase by five percent." On page forty five of the Budget Book, I'm sure you've all read it, "Our Director of Finance comments on the robustness of the budget proposals and talks about serious concern and continuing financial uncertainty." And then, in his own words, I quote, "The budget is predicated on a two point nine nine council tax increase in twenty five twenty six, where a maximum of five percent is allowed. As one five one officer, Section one five one officer, I will always recommend..." As 151 officer, section 151 officer, I will always recommend setting the maximum council tax allowable. This will ensure we maximise financial resilience through locally generated resources at the same time as reducing reliance on external resources that could be removed." It goes on, "Not maximising the increase may work against us in the new funding regime, as Lincolnshire is already one of the lowest-rate authorities." The budget, and it goes on, this is his words, "The budget is balanced using service reserves, and whilst that isn't new for us as a council, with further growing deficits in future years, strong organisation focus will be required during this year, the coming year, on mitigating future demand, further maximising efficiencies, and reducing expenditure." Sounds like cuts to me, but they're coming after the election, not before. Now, balanced against that sage advice from our financial advisers, is the voice of those residents who responded to our consultation, as councillor Hill has said this morning, and I see that there was a total of some seven hundred responses to our budget consultation. Interestingly, that's markedly fewer than the number of residents across our existing county who took part in the consultation, asking whether or not they wanted to see a mayoral authority created with an elected mayor responsible for the whole of Greater Lincolnshire from the Humber to the Wash. In that consultation, over eight hundred said no to a mayor, and in every one of our seven district councils that make up the current county of Lincolnshire, the majority of residents expressing an opinion said no thanks to the idea of an elected mayor, but they were overruled then. Despite devolution supposed to be about decision-making being made closer to the people whose lives are affected, the Conservatives said it would be too expensive to give our residents a democratic vote on how they wish to be governed. I actually believe that what most residents want to know about the budget proposals today is, do they represent good value for money? It's a fact that since 2010, local authorities have had to rely less and less on central government funding in annual settlements, and rely increasingly on rises in council tax levels, and one-off pots of money for specific purposes randomly announced at various times of the year to fund vital services. There is a real danger that the government will look at any authority which doesn't take the maximum available and take the view that we already have sufficient money and so don't need the extra pots. I don't think that's the way that we should be funded, but that's the way it is now and has been for some years. So I do believe that the 2.99% increase does represent a real risk that could be costly in the longer term. I've thought about an amendment very carefully, and discussed it with colleagues, and particularly across the shadow executive. As in previous years, we have many concerns about the cost pressures on vital services. Previously, in previous years, when we proposed spending from reserves to make a difference to people's lives, we were told, oh, no, 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 reserves are for a rainy day, we can only use them once, you know, and what wasn't said, though, was we were keeping our reserves that they were needed for an election year. This year, we've decided to focus on one priority that we believe is also a priority for the residents of Lincolnshire, and that is the increasing incidence of flooding as climate change takes hold, and as alluded to by councillor Hill. Almost nine hundred households across Lincolnshire, we know, were devastated by floods caused by Storm Babette in October twenty-three and Henk in January twenty-four. I can tell you that when you've just watched your carpets float down the road and you've got three foot of water in your kitchen, you're unlikely to see a more rainy day than that. The staff of all our agencies involved and many volunteers work their socks off to help families, farmers, and businesses devastated by the floods. We recognise that. But it's a fact that many families were still in temporary accommodation months after they were flooded out, and while Lincolnshire County Council was reviewing its performance as the lead flood authority, unfortunately, as we know, a third storm has hit us, leading to flooding of many houses already hit by Babette and/or Henk. This week, I attended a meeting of the county's flood and water management committee, which was considering its final report into the impact of those two storms. Huge frustrations with the current system of dealing with floods were shared cross-party. There was also broad agreement that insufficient funds are being invested to prevent flooding, mitigation of flooding when it happens, post-flooding repairs are often too slow, and urgent assistance to those worst affected. I trust all members of the county council will recognise that by creating, as the amendment calls for, a modest fund specifically to be readily available to respond to any future flooding events, that we can be better prepared to help our residents when they most need our urgent help. The reality of climate change tells us to expect more floods in the future. As well as working to invest to prevent flooding in the first place, I believe creating an emergency flood fund from one million pounds of existing reserves could make a positive, real difference to those worst hit by flooding. I move the amendment. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Do you have a second there? councillor Karen Lee, you have got six minutes if you wish to speak.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to start as well by thanking Andrew Cochrane and Michelle for helping us work through the budget process, it's really appreciated, thank you. In seconding the shadow executive budget amendment, I just want to say that I endorse everything that councillor Dilks has said. I'm not going to go through it verbatim, you'll be very pleased to hear, but the one thing I was going to draw people's attention to was, again, page forty-five, point ten, point five, where our section 151 officer has said, "I will always recommend setting the maximum council tax allowable. This ensures we maximise financial resistance." And I suppose as well, it ensures that we don't have to dip too deeply into reserves if we set the maximum amount that we're allowed to set. And again, I checked as well back over the last five years, and the only time when the controlling group have kept council tax increases under three percent are when an election is expected to follow within the same year, and in 2022, 23, and 24, the raise was always the 4.99%. I do accept, though, that people, if you say to them, do you want us to keep council tax down, then of course they're going to say yes, but I can't help thinking that they'd have liked the luxury of being asked that outside of an election year, but then they never had that luxury, did they? The shadow exec have looked at the figures in the budget long and hard, and there's a lot that we'd like to do, but again, we're wary of spending reserves. We feel very strongly, though, that the huge threat posed by flooding to residents right across the county has got to be taken very, very seriously. Should sufficient funding not be available to deal with the catastrophic impact of flooding in a timely manner, that's the key thing, then that damage can be so much worse, it can cause increased hardship to homes and to businesses, and that could potentially have been avoided had the funding been available to address the damage more quickly. So the emergency funding would also make it easier to put in place measures to prevent further damage happening quickly, that's the whole point of it, it's there to be dealing with things quickly on the ground. The opposition feel that Lincolnshire County Council, as the local flood authority, have got a duty to protect local residents, and we think, I actually stand by what the government's doing to tackle global warming, it should be an absolute top priority tackling global warming, because it's only ever going to get worse. So for that reason, we are suggesting a million pounds is set aside as a separate amount within the existing volatility fund of forty-six million, and it would only ever be used in the case of an emergency, we might not even have to spend it if we don't have major flooding. You know, we're not saying let's have it there and let's spend it, it's there if it's needed, so in that respect, it's not a recurring cost. And we don't think that this amendment is controversial, and we hope that the proposal is accepted. But now I want to come to the bit that maybe is a bit controversial. I'm not proposing any more spending at all, but there are lots of areas where we could have suggested extra spending, and for me, that would have been the household support funding, because that funding supports people such as our veterans, who have suffered problems with mental health, and people with addiction issues, among other things. Homelessness increased by ninety-four percent across Lincolnshire between 2020 and 2022, and it was only actually forty-six percent across England as a whole, so there clearly is a problem locally. And supporting people, including veterans, who end up sleeping on our streets and who die, on average, thirty years younger than the rest of the population, would have been absolutely at the top of my list. So back in October, we had adult scrutiny, and it's a cross-party meeting, and we had a really broad discussion, and everybody joined in that discussion, the Conservatives, Labour, Independent, everybody. And rather than accept any of the options that were suggested by the officers at that meeting in terms of the funding recommendations for next year, that scrutiny committee voted by six to four members to continue the current level of, sorry, six to three it was, to continue the current level of funding and meet the cost of inflation, which put another half a million on it. But when that went to executive committee, the chair of that committee, who didn't even attend the scrutiny meeting, sent a substitute instead, didn't convey the strength of committee's feelings, and told the exec that he was quite happy with what officers had recommended. So I just thought to myself, well, I suppose that's some kind of democracy, but it's not really one that I think that's particularly representative of the feelings of that scrutiny committee, and sometimes you wonder, what's the point? So just to clarify, hadn't we, had we not been dipping into reserves today, I'd have been suggesting that LCC fully fund that service this year, because I actually think that vulnerable people locally deserve no less than that, and I hear all the noises about, there are other people to fund it, but we're talking about who's got the big budgets here and who actually can do that, because that's what matters at the end of the day, that those people aren't sleeping on the streets and they get the support that they need. But I'm a realist, and on this occasion, I want to speak up for a measure that I think may have broad consensus and is more likely to be passed, so our amendment on flooding is the thing that we are focusing on, and I really hope that the members opposite will support that amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Lee. I think it's fair to say that, of course, the opposition always have the opportunity to put in an alternative budget, which they didn't. However, I now wish to invite other councillors to speak, to indicate by raising their hand, and I have a list already, please indicate, and the chief executive will take notes. The first one on here is councillor Brookway.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and thank you very much to the Leader and the leaders of the opposition for giving such detailed and helpful comments. I think the timing of this 2.99% is actually important. We are living in an extraordinary time where the Labour Government is sucking the heart out of Lincolnshire farms, Lincolnshire businesses, and Lincolnshire pensioners, and I do feel that county council has a responsibility to try and deliver the services while trying to leave a little bit of money in people's pockets. However, I do also want to say that it is my plan to support this motion, Chairman, but I also plan to support the amendment, and I'll tell you why. I do remember that the members of the opposition were very supportive when the Conservative Group wanted to put an extra six million in for flooding. That is very good cross-party working, and this extra million will indeed help, and I see this as a very good incident of councillors here at this council putting residents before politics. Of course, we're going to take a pop at each other occasionally, especially now, but what we've got here is a fine level of cross-party working. You supported us, and therefore it's a pleasure to support your extra contribution to this. So one thing I would ask, though, whilst I'm not proposing any changing in any wording to what you've suggested, I would ask that we be mindful of the flexibility needed to use this million. You know, you've given it a name, well, let's be a bit flexible to see that it goes to those who need it, but I'm going to support the motion and the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Cleaver.
Thank you, Chairman. I care about flooding. It affects my residents and my division. Clearly, flooding is now the greatest threat to our county, and we need to respond to it accordingly with all the resources we have at our disposal. We have tens of millions of pounds in reserves for a rainy day. Flooding is caused by rainy days, so it's really obvious that we should have a flood reserve. We've not responded quickly enough in the past always, and we need to have the funds available to respond quickly in the future. I support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Carrington.
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. I really just want to address the issues raised in the amendment, which I think is a very important one, and I definitely support it. It's interesting when we talk about cross-party support, because when you look at what flooding does, it does not respect boundaries. It doesn't respect boundaries which are lines on a map, it doesn't respect political boundaries. I spent a lot of time in meetings in the past year with councillor Clarke. The issues that have flooded out his residents in Lincoln, a little bit further down the stream, have been doing damage to mine in Cannick Fen or Washinborough, Hengton, Branston, and all the way down to Boston. We've had the report of the Flood and Water Management Committee, I know it's only a few days ago, it's a complex report, but the bottom line is, flood resilience needs more money. We cannot substitute for government underfunding, both direct and in terms of what the government gives to the Environment Agency, or indeed, problems with how the Environment Agency spend it, but the principle of this motion I very strongly support. But I just put to members that there should be some thought given to how it's spent, and I think there are four points I'd like to make on that. One, the use of the reserve should not be a substitute for central government underfunding. Two, the use of the reserve should not be a substitute for the responsibilities of the Environment Agency or other funded bodies. Thirdly, the use of the reserve should be directly to aid the residents that we in this chamber are privileged to serve. And fourthly and finally, we must be mindful when we use that reserve of our role as the lead local flood authority. Chairman, in the past eighteen months, we have seen terrible impacts of flooding right across the county of Lincolnshire. I doubt that there is a division which has not been adversely affected, and I hope that all of us can support this creation of this reserve, I hope that all of us can take ownership of it. The Flood and Water Management Committee have done a great service, and I'm very mindful that they only reported a few days ago, I was privileged to be a plus-one on that group and to contribute to it. What they have said is, we must do more. Well, we can't substitute for government, but we can do more and we should do more, so let's in this chamber this morning take the lead on turning recommendation into action. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Dyer.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and I think this administration continually, since I've been a member, has put additional funding into flooding. A couple of years ago, there was an extra four million pounds, and I think when we saw this amendment come forward, we've taken a look as a group, and we're going to figure out the best way to make sure that this can be spent effectively, because you mentioned emergency, well, there's emergencies virtually year on, year out, and one option that I think we can explore is an expansion of the Property Flood Resilience Scheme. So most of you will be aware of this scheme. At the moment, we're dependent on government funding for that, and often, there's not enough money coming forward, and residents, time after time, are not getting the funding they need to defend their homes. So what we've discussed at the Conservative Group this morning, and we're going to look at, is whether this scheme can be expanded with that one million pounds, and we create a Lincolnshire, Lincolnshire County Council's own Property Flood Resilience Scheme, and that would be run in a very similar way to the DEFRA scheme that DEFRA operates, but it would be a Lincolnshire scheme. At the moment, the government level is about five thousand pounds per property, of course, that would get us five thousand pounds per property, that would get us about two hundred properties protected across Lincolnshire, but that would be for this council to work out where we set the bar, we could set more. For instance, I know councillor Boquet mentioned in her patch, some works cost ten, fifteen thousand pounds, so can we have a look as a council whether we can spend more money to support people with lower incomes who can't afford that extra additional funding? Just one point on this, at the moment, because of the DEFRA grants, the industry capacity is already maxed out, so if we were to go down this route, it would have to be spread over a couple of years purely because of the industry capacity to roll out these schemes, but I think certainly this administration doesn't shy away in spending money on flood prevention, and I think certainly we're going to be accepting that, and I think there's something we can do for property flood resilience, because ultimately, a million pounds, whilst it sounds like a lot of money, it doesn't go far. go far when it comes to flood schemes. In property flood resilience schemes, just a survey can cost about eight hundred pounds. So the—this Conservative Group hopefully will improve upon your proposal and make sure that it's spent effectively. I have forty seconds now to bash you lot. So you've come up to this chamber today, you've come up and you've spoke about increasing council tax. You've come towards and lectured us on increasing council tax, and you have—you've had the gall to say that, but you have not put an alternative plan forward, minus a million pounds. This authority spends hundreds of millions of pounds, and you've got one tiny amendment. So in a few weeks' time, we're going to be going to the polls across Lincolnshire. The South Holland Independents can't be bothered to turn up. The Labour Party—well, you've crashed the economy more than Liz Truss has, and you have not got an alternative plan for Lincolnshire. So I say, chairman, we have a plan. We're delivering for the people of Lincolnshire. Vote Conservative!
Councillor Dyer, i—in fairness, I'd like to give you all more than three minutes, but that's not going to be allowed, okay? Next, councillor Spratt. Here we go.
Well, how the hell do you follow that? Can I associate myself with colleagues who've been speaking about flooding and welcome the amendment that's been put forward? I want to concentrate primarily on what my friend councillor Dilk said, because he didn't just speak about the budget, he spoke about more wider economic things insofar as the government's concerned. First of all, there was an inevitability, Mr. Chairman, that inflation would rise after Covid. The government borrowed half a trillion pounds to keep the economy going, and there was an inevitability that inflation would follow that. People didn't complain when they were paid eighty percent wages for staying at home and doing nothing. So we are paying—pay—we are playing catch-up from that point. The second thing I want to mention, and let's get it on the record, I mean councillor Dyer was absolutely right. The opposition have clearly said today they want to have five percent increase in council tax. Five percent, if not more. So if the officers had recommended six percent, seven percent, eight percent, subject to government authorisation, would the opposition have gone for that? I would suspect they probably would. But the problem is, the public, according to what all others know, are suffering, particularly what the Labour Party have said, a cost-of-living crisis. So I'd like to refer to page eighty-one, response number seven. You've got down there a lady. She's a WASP woman. She's been let down by this government, who are not doing what they promised to do. She's had a winter fuel allowance cut by this government. And the problem is here—the problem is, and just talking about the winter fuel allowance for a moment, if I may, Mr—Mr. Chairman, just talking about it for a moment, the winter fuel allowance, if you're rich—in inverted commas, you probably don't need it, and I understand that, and we all accept that. If you're poor, you get it paid for. But look at that lady at response seven on page eighty-one. She's a pensioner, she's worked hard all her life, she's done the right thing, she's pulled a bit aside, she's perhaps got a small pension and bought a house. She's done the right thing. She's done a Tory thing, a good Tory thing, doing the right thing, trying to stand on her own feet, trying to help herself. And what's this government done? They've penalised people who do the right thing, and it's an absolute disgrace, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Spratt. Next, councillor Bunny.
Thank you, Chair. I think we're all very pleased to hear the administration's view that they're going to be supporting our amendment for the flood management, and—and money's to put aside for those who need it when the floodwaters come. Having sat on the Flood and Water Management Committee and various other things, I am very interested in that we always tend to think about the current ones, which have just been, whether it be January the sixth, seven twenty-five, Storm Hank, Storm Babette. But as we know, these floods have been occurring for a long time, even going back to two thousand and twenty-two. I think market raisins received heavy water three or four times in that time, but not necessarily as bad as on that one occasion. But once your water is in your house, it is a problem and you need support. And that's why I think that the idea of bringing forward the resilience funding for individual households on a Lincolnshire basis is—is very good, and we'll obviously welcome any support that the administration gives to that. I'm also interested that councillor Dyer describes the one million pound as being a tiny sum. He also mentioned it was a minor sum, and if it's a tiny sum, does that mean that he thinks it should be bigger? So I would hope that as time goes on, that the administration would see that tiny is not a good thing to have, and that they would expand that fund to be slightly more, certainly if it means that that money is going to be available for more than one or two years. I don't know how these things work. I know that we're meant to sit here and be told that we don't spend any money. I would like to see whether we can actually see some money coming from the other side to increase that million as time goes on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, it's councillor Kevin Clark.
As stated before, flooding in the county is the main risk. The amendment simply addresses that. I'm glad that I heard across the chamber there's full support for the amendment. The worst day I have actually had as a councillor was walking around the corner and seeing a row of residents stood outside the flooded homes. One of those residents in two thousand and twenty-three described the response she got of all authorities and partners as a complete shambles. The hope is this amendment will go some way to restoring the faith in the council when they get flooded again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, councillor Pete Wood.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I actually represent an area that's featured on, I don't know, Countryfile and all sorts of other places. It's probably the most flooded farm in Lincolnshire, and it's been underwater for months and months at a time, and to such a degree, the farm has not been able to plant a crop or get any income from it. What makes matters worse was that the chap in question, Henry Ward, has only recently inherited the farm from his father, and I don't know if he's going to suffer inheritance tax or whatever, but there's a big issue there attached to it. As many people know, I work on various drainage boards and with regard to the Environment Agency, and we've recently had a meeting at the Environment Agency where I said I would very much like to put up the—the level of taxation, if you like, the level of payments made possible to as much as possible, because there will never, ever be enough within the pot. And a million pounds, yes, it is a considerable sum, but yes, it will never be enough, and I'd be an advocate of putting a lot more in there. But then the issue also comes with, okay, a million pounds, it sounds like a lot of money, but the issue is, how do you spend it? And the issue is, it needs to be spent efficiently. And whilst I can have good regard for the drainage boards and good regard for the county council, spending that money well, I just keep repetitively asking the Environment Agency, sharpen your pencil, make sure the budgets, make sure the projects are worked up, because you will never, ever get through the projects that are there. Currently, the Environment Agency have so much outstanding work, and allegedly, they keep telling us that they are underbudged for what they're trying to achieve, but even now, there's so many different schemes within Lincolnshire that have suffered from Babette, et cetera, and those schemes have not been repaired. They're still at threat, and the people are still living in fear, for want of a better word, with regard to what's going on. And at the end of the day, it's been said, nobody wants wet carpets, nobody wants to lose crops off farm—farmland, because we actually need all of it. The issue is, we need to be pushing backwards through the Environment Agency, through to DEFRA, and demanding more money from central government.
Thank you. Councillor Overton.
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to support the amendment to start with, and thank the colleagues who have also voiced their support. In my area, we have a bungalows, a si—a few bungalows, and they were flooded right up to the windows. So these sing—sometimes single or two elderly people flooded to the windows, and you can imagine how devastating that is. And they've not been able to get adequate funding or support, and they haven't—have not been able to get back in their homes. So the problem—so it—it is a vital problem, a really important, and two hundred homes, as mentioned, sounds like just a number, but when you think these are whole lives of people turned upside down, you start to recognise just how important it is. Hundred and ninety-five reports were mentioned earlier. When you look through those, and I'm sure many of you have, as I have, there is a vast amount of work that needs doing. Each of those is a significant piece of work. It's going to be really difficult to get all of those agencies doing the work they need and finding the funding for it. So I appreciate the criteria that was put forward by councillor Carrington to say that it should not be—this fund should not be used as a replacement for anybody else's responsibilities. And I do support the suggestion that it should come—that it should be part of the resilience fund for homes, and I think that's important, though the point about the farms that's been raised as well has to be considered. So I think it is good to have this further considered by the scrutiny groups that we've got, and I think we'll get some really useful outcomes from that. So thank you for that. On the overall budget, why didn't we produce an alternative, a complete alternative? Of course, there's two things. One is, if you want to be effective, it's good to focus, and today, it sounds like that's been the right solution. But also, you've got to bear in mind that there are sixteen councillors here who are not in the Conservative Group, representing a hundred and seventy-five thousand people. And yes, we have had an input at every stage, as is correct. That's what we're supposed to do. We all have an input into the process that comes forward in—through the scrutiny groups, through—the whole year, saying this needs to be more, that needs to be less. We've been working on it throughout the year, and that's the good thing about coming to this council, in that we hopefully, for the most of the year, until it comes to the moment, we're working solidly together to get the best solutions. Yes, disagreements, but we try to get the best outcomes. So I'm really pleased that there is support. Just to recognise, and I have eight seconds, the government have calculated how much they think we need, and that's that limit that they've given us. If you don't charge the limit they've given us, we will be short. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Davy.
Thank you, chairman. It's always good to hear consensus in the chamber about an area that I oversee, particularly around the flooding issues. I just want to say, obviously, we had the meeting of the Flood and Water Committee this week, and the Storm's impact report was processed by the committee. It's now with me, and I will be responding to that in the next couple of weeks, and back to the Flood and Waters Committee. So I sus—I suggest that that committee looks at my response, which I will make sure is very detailed, and we try and find a way forward to actually spend the money wisely in terms of how we react to that report. I just want to be—a word of caution, a million pounds is a lot of money, but in the work we do in this area, it is a very small amount of money. So I do not want the public to think from this debate today that putting a million pounds in is going to change the dynamic of what we're currently going through. It won't. The EA is currently underfunded just on the repair bill alone from Babette and Hank by some thirty million pounds. We need to really be making the case to government that we need more money to be allocated to this whole area and to be properly allocated to the agencies that are responsible. But also, I think government needs to direct those agency—agencies in a different way. We have this conflict between natural environment and habitats, and actually dredging rivers that need to be dredged, and we've got to actually make the protection of people, property and businesses within our county the priority, particularly around funding. And we need to stop having this conversation that, you know, we're going to go and spend two million on some habitat creation and not deal with the—the dredging of a river that's going to protect five hundred homes. We've really got to sort this out. So I think when I respond to the report to the committee, I am going to copy that report and my response to the Secretary of State, because I think we need to make a much stronger argument with government around this issue. We can do what we can locally, and we should, but we've got to recognise that there are other agencies that need to do their bit, and they need to be telling government to get the funding levels right so they can deliver for all of us and not put all the onus on this council. So I welcome the debate today, I welcome the discussion, but let's recognise reality as well.
Thank you. Councillor Marvle.
The current theme is tax, tax and more tax. And I don't know about anybody else here, but you know what? The matter tax I pay, I'm getting rather fed up with it. And—and then all I hear is, every service wants more money. And I'm sort of sat here going, well, you don't have to be a genius, there is really no more money, you know? And when we look across the pond to what our fellow friends are doing over there, which is all about actually saving money and delivering services more efficiently. And actually, people like what they hear. And when you hear of the money that's wasted, yes, you can sort of understand why Trump is rising in his glory. But I look here and think, you know what? Two-point-nine-nine percent, we can deal with that. It's about the rate of inflation, and actually, we do provide very good value for money in our services. But in two years' time, we've got a great opportunity. Not only have we got the opportunity this year with the mayor coming to start to look across borders to streamline in some of our services, but we've also got local government reform. And that is a brilliant opportunity, because actually, I'm a big believer, there is no more money, we have to work smarter. And the only way we're going to work smarter is by being more efficient. And when you look at local government reform, as we've talked about, ten councils all pottering around in Lincolnshire, yes, there is a lot of benefits into reforming our local government. We look at drainage, and we all go on about drainage. Well, actually, I would also look at reforming them as well in two years' time as well. We've got umpteen drainage boards, we've got an Environment Agency, we've got Lincolnshire County Council, we've got ten district councils, all dithering about, and actually, when you go to a residence and they go, I've got flooded, where do I go? I'm like, good luck. Well, first off, start with your district, then go to the county, might end up at the EA, drainage boards might come into it, might not. It's complicated, and actually, they don't want that. And then I look at all the reports done, and I'm like, in some of my villages, I'm thinking, right, they're looking at individual spots, but there's a new housing estate about to be built with a lot more housing coming in. You know, where—that water has to go out through its drainage system. So we need to stand back and say, let's look at our whole system in Lincolnshire, and actually, how can we make it better? Because at the minute, it's a bit disjointed with too many people in it, and we can actually all work much closer together under a Lincolnshire water branding, where we are far more efficient. And we should start to look at that as—
Thank you.
—with the local government reform and actually—
Thank you.
—generate savings—
Thank you.
—and bring out even better services. Thank you.
Councillor Ashton.
How can I follow that apart from to say, hand off our drainage boards? They do a superb job in Lincolnshire, and we should be proud of the local knowledge that many of them bring to the table, the efficiency with which they do their job. But I feel I digress from the subject. I am delighted to be able to vote for a budget which is balanced, which meets the priorities of our communities of this council, but importantly leaves two percent of extra potential council tax, some seven-point-four million pounds, in the pockets of local people. Now, many of us, including me, could think of things which we could spend seven-point-four million pounds on. For me, it might be a rivers authority for Lincolnshire, for others, it would be rural bush routes or doing more road maintenance. However, at a time when generations of farmers face being inheritance taxed out of their livelihoods, when so many local people are going to be denied pay rises this year as their firms struggle with the national insurance tax grab, at a time when our elderly have been deprived of their winter fuel support this winter, this year— been deprived of their winter fuel support this winter, this year, it is absolutely right that we keep this money, this 7.4 million pounds, in the pockets of local Lincolnshire residents. The government may feel, the national government may feel entitled to help itself to as much other people's money as it can possibly get away with, but in this council, we are showing very clearly that we are much better than that. However, I am happy to support the amendment. The work of the Flood and Water Scrutiny Committee, the investigation into the impacts of Storm Babette and Henk, has been genuinely in the spirit of working across this chamber, and we've had good contributions at our meeting this week from members on this side and from that side of the chamber, and right the way through that process. And I think it is fair to say that when the water is coming up, there is no party political angle on that, it is something that we all have a duty to tackle. It is clear from the work that the committee has done and the conclusions which we agreed on Tuesday, that a great deal more money will be needed to keep our people in Lincolnshire safe, in their homes, their businesses and on their farms over coming years. Government needs to step up and meet this challenge. However, in the meantime, I am delighted to vote for an additional 1 million pound emergency flooding reserve to help keep the people in the communities I represent safe, and I am pleased to support this budget too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Austin.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm going to start by aiming my comments at one particular young member of this council. I choose...
Chairman, points of order. I don't think a member of this council should be ageist. If I was to say the opposite and make my points to an elderly member of this council, there will be uproar. So I demand that the member for, well, Councillor Austin, withdraws her ageist remark about me and words it in a more correct manner. And stop being ageist, Councillor Austin, how dare you!
Would you like to carry on, Councillor Austin? I will allow you a bit more than three minutes.
Well, maybe it allows me to have, to give you a few facts. I happen to represent 40 properties, or the residents of 40 properties, that were flooded in January in a part of the county, in the part of Boston that had never had flooding before. And that was going to be the first thing I mentioned. But I am also concerned that a councillor chose to be critical of three members who are not present today and weren't here to make, to defend themselves. I actually choose to be a member of the South Holland Independence, and it was with the agreement of the Chief Executive and other people present in this council, because I have more in common demographically and geographically with that part of the county. Now, those three members were on their way here today, those other three members of that group. However, one of them was taken ill on the way, and they thought it more prudent to drove back to the flooding area rather than to come on to this chamber and potentially be ill in this chamber. That is the reason why they are not present, and I think Nigel West, the Chief Executive, and other people are aware of this. So please, perhaps, I'm not going to say who that person was, because I wouldn't want to embarrass them, but I perhaps would be grateful if after this you would perhaps consider criticising people who are not present. Now, returning to what I was going to say, I had 40...
Five seconds.
I can say quite a lot in five seconds, I assure you. I am going to support anything that has got money for flooding. So I will be supporting this budget.
Thank you.
And that for me is the key thing at this moment.
Thank you, Councillor Austin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have waited a long time, Chairman, and thank you for listening to me.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Baxter.
Councillor Dyer, I think that was quite undignified. Councillor Marfleet, I join...
Councillor Baxter, before you criticise Councillor Dyer, you have a point, you can make a point of order, there's no point in bringing in Councillor Dyer unless you want to refer, you've referred him by name, I'm sure Councillor Dyer might want to respond to you now, so let's do it through the proper procedure. Carry on.
Okay, okay, I'd like to make a point of order and say that Councillor Dyer's intervention was inappropriate and unnecessary.
Carry on.
Thank you. So, Councillor Marfleet, I agree with what Councillor Ashton says, the internal drainage boards are exemplary in the way they do the work, certainly in my end of Lincolnshire, and small is beautiful, and I think that's a watchword, because when you compare them to the Environment Agency, which is big and ugly and less useful, I'd rather have the drainage boards out every day. So, Councillor Davy said earlier on in the meeting that all the reports have been completed. Those reports, the Section 19 reports, take months to produce, and rarely did they say anything that wasn't immediately obvious the day after the flood. As was shown at a Grefford Parish Council meeting I went to lately, where the day after the second annual flood, Grefford had put together all the reasons, and were careful to say, we're not pointing the finger at LCC, or pointing the finger at Environment Agency, or pointing the finger, they said, look at this, a lot of problems, a lot of different agencies, we need help. I'm very grateful to the officers of our flooding and highways teams for what they've done in Grefford, and also in Tallington, to try and put things right and mitigate against future flooding. However, Grefford, I'm sure, and possibly other villages, well, across the county but also in my division, would be keen to spend some of this money, if it's approved, on flood resilience and flood mitigation. They've got some plans, but they don't have the money. So some of it should go to flood resilience and mitigation. I'm really pleased that you seem to be supportive of the amendment, and kumbaya, I think it's great. So the rest of the budget, I'm afraid I cannot support. So I'll be voting for the amendment, but I'll be abstaining on the budget. I think the Conservative-run council's decision to ignore officers' recommendations, I'm still on here, to ignore officers' recommendations with respect to the council tax is irresponsible, cynical and disappointing. I suspect the new government are not fans of Lincolnshire County Council, and we know that in other parts of the country, councils have been punished by the government for not raising council tax to the legal maximum. We're potentially shooting ourselves in the foot, civil servants taking the attitude that clearly you don't need the extra money, or you would have raised it when you had the opportunity. So I cannot support the budget, but I will not oppose it. I am grateful that you seem to be supporting the amendment, and I will abstain. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no other speakers, so I'd like to invite Councillor Whittington with the right to respond. Councillor Whittington.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much indeed, Mr. Chairman. Thanks for a very interesting debate across the chamber, which I've been following with interest. I mean, I think first, sort of making the point that, you know, whilst for next year we are having to spend roughly 8 million pounds out of our financial volatility reserve, the reason why we've got a financial volatility reserve in the first place of nearly 50 million pounds is because over the last, certainly 10 years since I've been a member of this council, and the years before that, successive Conservative-led administrations have run this council in a very financially prudent way, which has allowed us to actually have reserves, to actually deal with this rainy day, unlike some other councils across the country, which haven't taken difficult decisions and are now facing Section 114 notices and bankruptcy. You know, in terms of our adults and children's social care over the last 15 years, we've moved to a model of doing an awful lot of early intervention work, which is not only better for the client groups that we deal with, because we get in there earlier and we can mitigate and prevent problems from becoming worse. So it's better for, it's better, it's better for the service users, and it's also better financially for us. And as the leader also mentioned, we've also made nearly 400 million pounds worth of efficiency savings over the last 14 years by sound financial, sound financial management. You know, we are facing potentially some real changes and challenges going forward with local government reform, with the proposed government spending review coming forward. You know, we don't know quite what the financial picture is definitely going to be over the next few years, but we know that this council does face some quite significant cost pressures, especially in the areas of adults and children's, and the reasons, and the reasons for those around increased, increased demand and spending in children's services have already been mentioned. It's also worth mentioning as well, as the leader did, that we are the third lowest council tax precept in the country for county councils, and I think, I think that's proof there that we have managed the finances of this county extremely well, whilst minimising the amount of money that we take from our local residents. Interestingly, this year, of course, what would be important to bear in mind, the financial gap with the 2.99% council tax increase was about 8 million pounds, which is a quite figure. And bearing in mind, on the other side, as a result of the pulling of the Rural Services Delivery Grants, we've lost 9 million pounds. So if we'd had the Rural Services Delivery Grants with a balanced budget on a 2.99% council tax increase without having to dip into reserves, but it was the Labour government's choice to abolish Rural Services Delivery Grants, replace it with a recovery grant, and only using deprivation as the sole driver for local government funding, and to totally ignore sparsity. Well, as somebody who's in whose division is the Earlsfield Estate, which is one, which is in the bottom 10% of the most socially deprived areas, not only in South Castiva, which it is, not only in Lincolnshire, but also across the country. So some of my residents, some of the poorest in the country, their level of deprivation is not being recognised. And I think that's a really, really important point. It shows that the new Labour government, so many of what it's been doing, it's pulling money, services, resources from rural to go to its Labour-voting areas in the cities, and that is, and that is, and that's just naked, pure political decision. Terms of flooding, I've had real flooding issues in two villages in my division, both Allington and Sedgbrook, quite a number of Section 19 reports have come there. I'm actually, on the 7th of March, going on a side visit to one resident in Allington, whose property's been flooded three times in the last four years, they've just got the Henk, the Section 19 reports from the previous flooding, they were flooded again in January, they're currently living in a caravan next to their cottage and the whole place, you know, and they can't do anything, they can't do anything. So that's why I'll be supporting the amendment around the flooding, because I think it's really, really important. I mean, Allington, actually, in January, the village, entire village actually got cut off for about five hours. Every entrance point into the village was flooded, the start section of the A1, which Allington, one of the exits onto the A1, the A1 was flooded. I agree, flooding is a major issue, so I'm really, really supportive of giving this, 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 this extra funding, because it will help residents in my division. And finally, a thank you, also on behalf of the residents in my division, under the capital schemes, the extra 2.5 million pounds that was granted to repair Dyce Road in my division, which for many years caused residents a great, a great deal of trouble. So I'm very, very thankful that some of the money from the Mayor of the Bynon Authority, so that 20 million pounds, was actually used on Dyce Road, any ground them. Many, many thanks on behalf of my residents.
Thank you, Councillor Whittington. Councillor Hill, would you like to respond?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I'd just like to start talking about rhetoric. Let's remind us of what is rhetoric. Rhetoric is words but no actions. So we've heard a lot of rhetoric today, that we've sort of been chastised for not putting council tax up by 5%. We've been chastised for not doing all sorts of things, if only we put council tax up by 5%. Well, I'm sorry, members opposite, this was your opportunity. You could have moved an amendment, Councillor Baxter, all of you, to say, actually, we think it's important, we've had advice from the County Treasurer or the Director of Resources, so we are putting an alternative budget forward to actually increase council tax by 5%, and we're going to spend it on this, this and this. You didn't know such thing. So it was all just rhetoric. That's my...
Certainly, Councillor Whittington, can you turn your mic off? Sorry, Councillor Baxter, what are you saying?
Has he finished?
No.
Okay.
Hang on.
Point of order.
Is this a point of order, yes?
Yeah, yes.
I'll say so in the first place.
Point of order, within the procedure of the council, I'm not au fait with the Constitution, but did the administration get to sum up and then sum up again?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I didn't realise they got, they got three goes, okay.
Well, you've got to...
Thank you, you've been here four years, Councillor Baxter, I would have hoped by now you'd have known our procedures. So it is all just, it is all just rhetoric, members. They've said all sorts of things, have your cake and eat it, but the proof of the pudding, let's move it, yeah, they could have moved an amendment for all sorts of things, they chose not to, they were actually agreeing with the proposal to put council tax up by just under 3%. I actually join Councillor Austin in contradicting certain members of the council, because I think Councillor Dyer did say the household, the flood property resilience scheme is in place. No, it's not, it's gone. The government, and then we've written to the government to say, will you do what the previous government did and give, put this thing in place so that property owners could get some support, which was very popular, around 5,000 pounds. So it's not there, so it's not a question of topping it up, it doesn't exist anymore. I'm afraid the Labour government have said, no, we're not interested in, they've said nothing, which means they don't want to know. And I could just say to Councillor Lee, the Household Support Fund was actually carried on by the government, so I really think what your issues there were corrected, were actually dealt with. So, I mean, we've just had a lot of rhetoric, haven't we, people saying, well, we don't, you should put the council tax up by 5%, but that's what you should be doing, but by the way, we haven't got the courage to actually stick by our, by what we're talking about. I think I'm very pleased to support the, this group is very pleased to support the extra money for flooding. To remind you, this isn't a statutory function of the county council. Really, a lot of the flooding is caused by issues, main river, main river stuff and all the rest of it by Environment Agency, so it is a big problem, but we have, as has been acknowledged, I think, by the opposition, put extra money into this thing. And coming back to rhetoric, of course, what, let's just analyse what the, what the amendment actually means. What it means is the opposite, the councillors and councillors, all they're doing is transferring from one reserve to another reserve. So we've always known in this council that if we needed extra money, we've always said extra money would be coming from our reserves. So again, they could have said, let's have a million pounds to do X, Y, Z. They've chosen not to. So I think although we are supporting this just movement of reserves, effectively is what they're doing, what we think, and it has been explained earlier, is that we want to continue with the, with the flood property resilience scheme, so that if this million pounds is then added to or removed from the volatiles reserve, they will be reserved there specifically to actually support households who currently are asking me, because I've had a lot of, like Councillor Baxter, I've had a lot of people re-flooded, and they're saying, well, are we going to get money again to do the right thing? So I would propose, although we do intend to vote for this motion, I think we need to be more specific, and it will be about creating this Lincolnshire County Council flood property resilience scheme up to the value of 1 million pounds. So I don't think I need, I'll take advice, that is the intention, and I think if that's what the council votes for, I'm assuming that that will just happen in terms of, but I'm happy to take advice from, from officers, but that's certainly the intention. So yes, we will support you, but you need to be more, we need to be more specific about exactly what we're going to do, because frankly, moving from one reserve to the other won't change anything. So I move, I support the amendment and obviously will be supporting the main...
There's no, is it a point of order, Councillor Lee?
It is a point of order, Chair. I made it very clear that it was with the intention of moving quickly, that is the difference. I made it very clear that it was with the intention of moving quickly, that is the difference.
Councillor Dyer, did you want to say something?
Yes, chairman, just a point of order to withdraw my remarks regarding the South Holland independence. I very much apologise for that remark, I hadn't realised one of them was unwell, so I will email councillor Rob Gibson and send him my best wishes. I'll just withdraw that remark and wish them very speedy recovery. Thank you.
Thank you. Right, we're now going to have a recorded vote on the amendment by the shadow executive, so I'd hand over to Debbie to carry that one through.
Thank you very much, and it needs to be a recorded vote. So we're now recording the shadow executive amendment. So I will read out the name of each member. Would those voting for say yes, those voting against say no, and those abstaining say abstain. Councillor Allen.
Yes.
Councillor Armiger. Councillor Ashley Morris. Councillor Ashton. Councillor Austin. Councillor Baxter. Councillor Mrs Boquet. Councillor Mrs Bradwell OBE. Councillor Mrs Brockway. Councillor Briggs. Councillor Brooks. Councillor Bunny. Councillor Butroyd. Councillor Carrington.
Yes.
Councillor Kev Clark. Councillor Mike Clark. Councillor Cleaver. Councillor Cook. Councillor Coopland. Councillor Davy. Councillor Dilks. Councillor Dyer. Councillor Fleetwood. Councillor Gray. Councillor Hall. Councillor Hill OBE. Councillor Kendrick. Councillor Key. Councillor Lee. Councillor Macy. Councillor Marfleet. Councillor Morn. Councillor McNally. Councillor Murray. Councillor Mrs Overton MBE. Councillor Pepper. Councillor Mrs Rawlins. Councillor Reed. Councillor Seer. Councillor Skinner. Councillor Sneath. Councillor Spratt. Councillor Stone. Councillor Strangford. Councillor Kirill. Councillor Mr Vernon. Councillor Whittington. Councillor Mrs Woolley. Councillor Wutton. Councillor Young.
I think that was unanimous. Debbie? Unanimous, was it? Right, it's going to have a bit of order, please. The results were 50 for, none against, and none abstaining. So that was for the amendment. Now, we move to the recorded vote on the budget, and of course, it'll be as amended, because we put an amendment in, so that's what we're doing. Over to you, Debbie.
Yes, thank you very much. So the Conservative Group motion, as amended. Again, I'll read out the name of each member. Would those voting for say yes, those voting against say no, and those abstaining say abstain. Councillor Allen. Councillor Armiger. Councillor Ashley Morris. Councillor Ashton. Councillor Austin. Councillor Baxter. Councillor Mrs Boquet. Councillor Mrs Bradwell OBE. Councillor Mrs Brockway. Councillor Briggs. Councillor Brooks. Councillor Bunny. Councillor Butroyd. Councillor Carrington. Councillor Kev Clark. Councillor Mike Clark. Councillor Cleaver. Councillor Cook. Councillor Coopland. Councillor Davy. Councillor Dilks. Councillor Dyer. Councillor Fleetwood. Councillor Gray. Councillor Hall. Councillor Hill OBE. Councillor Kendrick. Councillor Key. Councillor Lee. Councillor Macy. Councillor Marfleet. Councillor Morn. Councillor McNally. Councillor Murray. Councillor Pepper. Councillor Mrs Rawlins. Councillor Reed. Councillor Rowe. Councillor Seer. Councillor Skinner. Councillor Murray. Councillor Whittington. Councillor Mrs Woolley. Councillor Wutton. Councillor Young. Councillor Mrs Vernon. Councillor Whittington. Councillor Mrs Woolley. Councillor Wutton. Councillor Young. Councillor Mrs Overton MBE.
Against. It's against. Results of the recorded vote are as follows: 41 for, one against, and eight abstentions. So both the amendment and the substantial budget are carried, and we'll move on to item eight, pay policy statement, 2025/26. A report by the deputy chief executive and executive director, resources, has been circulated. Over to you, councillor Hill.
Chairman, the pay policy committee met earlier this week and are proposing no changes to the policy, so I move the recommendations as stated.
Is there a second there? Councillor Baxter?
Thank you, I attended the pay policy subcommittee, which was chaired in a very friendly and convivial way by councillor Hill, and I thank him for that, and so I'm happy to second the proposal.
Thank you, councillor Baxter. We'll now move to the vote. Are there any speakers before we move to the vote? None seen. We'll move to the vote by a show of hands. Those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? One abstention. Thank you. That is carried. We will move now to the Audit Committee annual report. Over to you, councillor Rawlings.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, and I'd just like to take this opportunity to present the annual report of the Audit Committee to full council. The committee looked through the report and agreed as at our last committee meeting at the beginning of this month. As councillor Hill has alluded to, looking horizon scanning, as we have done in the report and throughout our committee meetings, we're going to face some challenging and turbulent times ahead, and other councils have had special interest reports in terms of lessons learned on their finance procedures and everything else. And I think it's a testimony to our officers and our members that this council is in a good financial position to withstand those risks coming forward. I'd like to take this opportunity as well to thank all the members of my committee, and also officers who have supported us on that journey, and all the advisers that have come to present information to the committee as well. This, as you may be aware, will be my last time on the Audit Committee, I'm not standing for reelection again, should I have in that regard. So, again, I would like to thank everybody for their assistance during my time as chairman, and I wish everybody success in the future. And we have, as a committee, discussed the training requirements that new members of the committee will need to look to from May onwards, which I think is important too. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you. So I'd like to think that all the chamber would be very appreciative of all you've done over the years as chairman of audit. You've done a terrific job, and we thank you very much indeed for everything you've done. Is there a second there, please? That's councillor Allen.
Thank you, chairman. I'm very happy to support all the comments that the chairman of the Audit Committee has made regarding the accounts, and to support the recommendations in the proceedings.
Thank you. Are there any speakers? None seen. We'll move to the vote. All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? That is carried. Thank you. Corporate parenting panel annual report, this is a report by the executive director of children's services that has been circulated. Over to you, councillor Bradwell.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, gives me great pleasure to present this annual report today to council. The corporate parenting panel report is for the last year. The report does underscore our collective responsibility, all of us here, as corporate parents, to ensure that every child in our care and our care leavers receive the support, the stability, and opportunities that they deserve. As elected members, our role extends beyond policymaking. We are entrusted with the moral duty to act as guardians of these young lives, advocating for their wellbeing and championing their aspirations. And I just wanted to underline to councils that we do discharge our duty in probably more in a way than other authorities do. You know, we take great pride, and I know the corporate parenting panel do, but in our children's scrutiny as well, everybody is very committed to ensuring that children in care are given the very, very best, you know, support and give them aspirations to go on to do all sorts of things. We have a number who go on to university, and not saying university's the best, but they do go, we encourage them to get a good career. So I would just like to, you know, recommend that the committee approve this corporate parenting today. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a second there? Councillor Rowe.
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I'd like to second this and just say a few words, if I might, as well, as chairman of corporate parenting panel. I'm sure that like me, when you first asked to stand for county council, you were not told that if elected, you would immediately become a parent to what is now in excess of, I think, 700 young people, and that it is your responsibility to ensure that they get the same sort of care and consideration that you give to your own children. When I became a district councillor, I was not aware that the same applied to me there as well. Andrew Morris, head of service for leaving care and supportive living for children and young people, and I have, over the last couple of years, in person and over teams, had meetings with the district councils, Boston and Lincoln, sorry, City of Lincoln councils, to talk about their responsibilities, and I'd like to thank them for the support they are now giving. I would also ask all you twin, triple, and quadruple hatters to look at your, to talk to your councils about their responsibilities to these young people. It probably won't surprise you all to hear that I'm not a great supporter of the policies of this present government, but I do applaud their desire to widen and increase the support for cared-for children, and I wait to see if they can convert this desire into sensible and tangible actions. I think it's important to say that the changes we are putting in place are to make the corporate parenting panel even better, especially with regard to having more young people involved, which I'm delighted to say starts at the next meeting in March with the participation of some of our young people. I wish to thank my fellow, my fellow panel members and our dedicated officers for their work, also the representatives from other organisations that contribute to the panel. My biggest thank goes to those people who choose to foster or adopt the young people in our care. Finally, as I have already said, it is the responsibility of every councillor to consider the care and support of our young people in everything we do. But to support this, could we consider that each committee, starting at the next session of this council, has a councillor that is a corporate parenting champion to keep us on our toes? Sorry, Martin and Trish, I hadn't mentioned this before, but I thought it was a good opportunity to mention it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Are there any speakers? Councillor Whittington?
Thank you, Mr Chairman, I'm a member of the corporate parenting panel, it's one of the panels I particularly enjoy. As somebody, I'm probably aware that 20 years ago, my wife and I adopted a child from Lincolnshire County Council, and when I became a councillor, I was really determined to get involved with the corporate parenting panel and with responsibilities that all of that actually entails. And really, just to reiterate what councillor Rowe's just said, we are all corporate parents, we are all collectively responsible for the welfare of all of the children in care. But on behalf of, speaking of somebody who has adopted, I just want to say a real big thank you on behalf of all the foster parents and all the adoptive parents in Lincolnshire, fantastic work our children's services do, and the corporate parenting panel does, on behalf of the welfare of those affected children. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Mike Clark?
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to take a few minutes of people's time. I became a visiting member, and I've been to Strot House on a number of occasions during my tour on this council, and I must admit, it came as a bit of a shock to me. The facilities were absolutely spectacular, the staff were marvellous in dealing with the children, and I must commend this council on the actions it's taken on helping children who are in a more deprived, both physically and mentally. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? None seen. We'll now move to the vote. All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? That is carried, excuse me. Motion's on notice, submitted in accordance with the council's constitution. A motion by the Conservative Group has been submitted. Over to you, councillor Macy.
Yes, thank you, chairman. I bring this motion as a passionate believer in the UK as a place of refuge for those fleeing war or genuine persecution. Successive governments have mismanaged immigration at all levels, and trust in the government on this issue has now reached rock bottom. This motion draws attention to the challenges we face here in the county. The pressure it is placing on communities, services, and social cohesion, and the need for the government to recognise this. We need to be a fair country and not be seen as a soft touch. We need to stop pandering to those that would wish to do our country harm. Immigration must be controlled with no ifs, no buts, and we must remind government that it has a national responsibility for this. Here in Lincolnshire, we have been hosting migrants, both legal and illegal, for a number years. Legal migration has been out of control for well over a decade, and although governments have been stating that they will reduce the numbers, this has not happened. Obviously, this is adding to the overall struggle in the country relating to housing, medical services, and services in general. Illegal immigration over the last few years has been increasing, and this has served to exacerbate this issue. Locally, the perception that was allowed to exist regarding Skegness being swamped by illegal immigrants has had a very detrimental effect on the tourism industry within the town. There are still hotels being used to house them, and the perception continues to exist in the areas from which the East Coast draws its visitors. Clearly, this is not unique to my area, that Lincolnshire and the country as a whole, which means action needs to be taken. This motion will go towards helping raise these issues with government, the impact this is having on our area, its local economy, and the excellent services we want to keep delivering. I therefore move the motion, chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a second there? Councillor Skinner?
Thank you, chairman. I support the motion, I reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. I have got two speakers so far, but please indicate if you wish to speak on this. It's councillor Cleaver first.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. The motion states that according to the 2021 census, 9.4% of Greater Lincolnshire's residents were born outside the UK. It then goes on to imply that this contributes to pressures on public services and housing in our county. I'll make four points about this statistic. First, 9.4% is lower than almost every one of our neighbouring areas. For Nottinghamshire, it's 13%. Leicestershire, 20%. Northamptonshire, 17%. Cambridgeshire, 19%. Peterborough, 28%. If you want to go to London, City Westminster, 56%. So to try to imply that immigration is a particular problem... So to try to imply that immigration is a particular problem in Lincolnshire and that our communities are disproportionately affected is simply wrong. Second, the fact is that the 2021 census is used to plan provision of public services across England for all residents, irrespective where they were born, so these are already known to the system and are already taken account of. Third, the vast majority of people in Lincolnshire who were born outside the UK have been invited here by employers who need their skills. They're not here to scrounge, and they're not here adding to the burden on public services. If you go to an A and E department in Lincolnshire, you're more likely to be treated by an immigrant than you are to be sitting next to one in the waiting room. Fourth, I would point out that some of the majority group here, apart from the 9.4%, were born outside the UK. Are we to believe that they're adding to the strains of our county's public services? Of course not. So I'm left wondering why we're discussing this motion. I've served on this council for nearly four years, and we've never previously discussed this issue, despite immigration happening throughout that period. So why is there apparently a problem now when there wasn't one previously? Indeed, is there a problem? I sat on the Health Scrutiny Committee for the last four years, I don't recall immigration being ever cited as a reason for our NHS being under strain. As recently as Wednesday this week, we discussed the Director of Public Health Annual Report, it doesn't mention migrants or immigrants once. Similarly, I've served on the Children and Young People Scrutiny Committee for the last three years, and never been told that immigration is adding a strain to our children's services. So where is the evidence that immigration is damaging our county? And if there's no evidence, why is the majority group so keen to pass this motion? I wonder what could have enticed them into proposing it. I think there might be a clue in the word enticed. I will certainly evote against this motion. Not only is it based on false premises, it perpetuates myths against about immigration. I oppose it, it is totally inappropriate.
Councillor Young.
Thank you, Chairman. During the past 14 years, when the Conservatives spent, was in government, a total of nearly a million immigrants entered Britain, the worst record in history of this country, Chairman. It's ironic now that now they're not in power, in less than a year, the Conservatives are asking the new Labour government, they should be stating that they should be doing more to address the impact on services locally. Here in Lincolnshire, only 20 months ago, the Conservatives tried to house thousands of asylum seekers on the former RAF Scampton site with total disregard of the impact. And more importantly, Chairman, it stalled a £300 million development on that site, something which we're trying hard to fight to restore now. Fighting this ill-fought Conservative idea cost the council taxpayers, or West Lindsay District Council, £1 million. The motion, which I believe is a template, and I think it'll be used across the country by the Conservatives, is no more, and I use councillor Hill's words on this, is no more than rhetoric and no more than electioneering. And like my colleague, I will not be supporting the motion.
Councillor Amadure.
Regarding the 9.44 figure, the motion states this figure represents the number of residents born outside the UK. Does this statistic distinguish between recent immigrants, immigrants or long-term residents who were born abroad? Does it consider the contributions these individuals do to the local economy and the community? Regarding the overall tone, the motion frames immigration as a problem and a strain. Does this approach risk creating a negative perception of immigration within the community? And how might this impact social cohesion? Is there more balanced, is there a more balanced approach that acknowledges both the challenges and the potential benefits of immigration?
Councillor Kevin Clark.
I would question the reference to the number of people born outside the UK. That includes my dentist, who's a very nice man, my doctor at the local medical centre, and not forgetting the consultants at the hospital, all not born in the UK. What is the motion actually saying? Is it saying they don't want these people here? In conclusion, the government have introduced the Border Security, Asylum and Immigration Bill in 2025. The bill creates a framework of new enhanced powers and offences to improve UK border security and to strengthen the asylum and immigration system. I'm unsure if the authors of the actual motion have actually read it, because if they read it, they want to put the motion forward. Thank you.
Councillor Lee.
Thanks, Chair. I'm going to start by saying that I do actually recognise that there are people who are worried about immigration, but I want to make some points on this motion. First of all, after 2010, coalition and Conservative government cuts meant that core spending power was actually 22.5% lower in 2019 than it had been in 2010. They put a little bit of extra money into it then, but inflation etted up, and by 2024 it's still 10% lower than it was in 2010. So as well as that, between 2018 and 2024, a record number of local authorities issued section 114 notices, effectively going bankrupt, more so than had done so in the last 30 years. And I've got this off a government website, so it's actually factually accurate to say that it was the budget cuts of previous governments are what are to blame for the decimation of public services. I said this for long and loud. The next point that I would make...
Just a moment, please. Point of information.
It's a point of information. I'm sure if councillor Lee looks at the reasons why councils such as Slough, Thorac, Birmingham and Nottingham issued section 114 notices, was because they mismanaged their financial situation, getting involved in, getting involved in property companies and the like, they shouldn't have been doing. It's a point of information, councillor Lee.
It's a point of information. Please be quiet. You finished? Thank you. Carry on councillor Lee.
I would repeat, it was coalition government and Tory cuts from 2010 that caused the decimation of public services. Right, I don't condone the kind of people smuggling that sees people die, but I would seek clarification, this 9.4% figure, is that illegal immigration? Is it legal immigration, or is it both? Because in Lincolnshire, our local social services and hospitals are run by people who weren't born in this country. And I worked in the NHS for 25 years, and over the last three years, there was a significant rise in what we termed as the international nurses. They keep Lincoln County Hospital running, and I have to say as well, the highly skilled Indian nurses on Johnson Wood were my colleagues, my friends, and I respected them greatly, and I really object to the tone of this motion. For that, for three years, the last Tory government spent £700 million on the Rwanda system, and from the day it started to the day it finished, 84,000 people crossed the Channel, and they just sent four volunteers back. Huge sums were wasted at Scampton, and yet last year, at the end of last year, small boat arrivals were actually lower than they were in 2022. So the truth is that the Labour government are working hard to clean up the mess they inherited. They're increasing return flights for people with no right to be in the UK, they're clearing the asylum backlog, which the last government allowed to reach record levels, and they're actually ending the use of expensive hotel accommodation, which at its height meant that 400 hotels were costing this country around £9 million a day. The Labour government's Border Security, Asylum and Immigration Bill has got measures built into it which build a fair and effective immigration system, measures which strike the right balance of reducing the UK's reliance on foreign labour whilst meeting our moral obligations through responsible humanitarian routes. So, because the Labour government already have an effective plan to manage immigration, I won't be supporting this motion, and you need to take a good look at yourself and own the, the actions, the political actions that you did.
Thank you. Councillor Baxter.
Thank you. This is, this is the worst, most depressing motion I've seen during the last four years. I know that many of you are trying to work out whether reform will get more votes from the Conservatives in your ward, perhaps to decide which Rosette to put on, but do you really think that writing a letter to the government is going to make any difference? And why weren't you writing letters to the government during the last 14 years? In my division, people have received leaflets from the extreme nationalist Homeland Party, and I suspect they might stand a candidate. But I'm not going to fan the flame or try to win votes from supporters of the far right. I would rather challenge the narrative that foreigners are somehow the universal cause rather than fellow sufferers of the problems of low wages, poor housing, NHS crisis and everything else. I thought about abstaining from the motion, but I'm not sitting on the fence. Even setting aside the grammatical mistakes in the motion, any fool, any fool can see what it's about, and I'm going to vote against it because of the advice and instruction from a higher authority. Exodus 22, do not mistreat or oppress a foreigner. Exodus 23, do not oppress a foreigner. Leviticus, when a foreigner resides among you in the land, do not mistreat them. Deuteronomy, do not deprive the foreigner or the fatherless of justice. Job, I was a father to the needy, I took up the case of the stranger. Matthew 25, I was hungry and you gave me something to eat, I was thirsty and you gave me something to drink, I was a stranger and you invited me in. They answered, Lord, when did we see you hungry or thirsty? He, he will reply, whatever you did for the least of these, you did for me, and whatever you did not do for the least of these, you did not do for me. You all know the story of the Good Samaritan. Try and work out which is a good guy and which is a bad guy in the Samar, in the story of the Good Samaritan. It's not the established authorities. And finally, Hebrews, do not forget to show hospitality to strangers, for by doing so, some people have shown hospitality to angels without knowing it. We should be bringing communities together, not trying to bring division.
Councillor Marple.
Thank you, Chairman. Immigration is a very large, diverse world. I mean, you know, for us pure yellow bellies, if you come from Yorkshire, you're an immigrant. So, but the point is, is it is large, it's diverse, and we need some people and some people we perhaps don't need. But I think reality is, if you look at Boston, they do a great job down there picking the vegetables and everything else. But going forward, our employment sector is going to shrink through automation, through AI. The world will change in the next 20 years. We will not need the people that we need today. So actually, whichever way you look at this, tightening up immigration is a good thing, because in 20 years, we don't need everybody, we won't need the jobs, the veg will be nearly all automated. And so therefore, if we keep letting everybody come, we're going to end up with huge unemployment, and it's the wrong approach. So now is the time to tighten up our belt on immigration, so that in 20, 30 years' time, we are far more geared up to where modern life will need to be at that point in time. And anything...
Just a moment, councillor Marple. Hold it, hold it there. Point of order.
Thanks, it's a similar one to councillor Whittington's. Could councillor Marple clarify if social care will be given by robots? Thank you.
Carry on councillor Marple.
Well, I tell you what, for some people, it could well be the answer. It might have a good little chitter chatter with a little robot, but, and other people will need human care. We don't know what the future really does hold, but we do know that AI is coming fast and that automation is coming fast, and robots are being developed more and more. But they will certainly hopefully go round my house and Hoover for me and maybe put a few things away along, and make my life easier. We have to basically tighten up immigration, and the people of this country want it tightening up. And even those that have come in, in the last 30, 40, 50, 80 years, actually want immigration tightening up. So anything to help support us getting a better immigration policy is a good thing, and that's why I welcome this, because it actually highlights the fact that we are here trying to address what is the UK's number one issue, which is immigration. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Bradwell.
Yes, I just wanted to say a few words. I do sit on the Migration Board in the East Midlands, so actually, you know, you get to know quite a lot what's going on. We have taken people into the county, but I have to say, we don't take as many as a number of the other counties within the East Midlands area like Leicester, Derby and places like that. But what I would say is that these, these people are looked after, the one, the people who have been living in Skegness, in some of the hotels, they are looked after. My issue is, and it has been an issue for many years, is that there is not a lot for them to do, and I've always pushed, and I know my colleagues on the board at the East Midlands pushed with Serco, who actually are connected with finding places for these people who come into the country. They don't have anything to do in the day, and they tend to walk around, because actually, we all know walking makes you feel better, and especially if you've got nothing else to do. So for me, the big issue is that, you know, we're not actually giving them things to do, or like, you know, if they're interested in, I don't know, painting or doing woodwork or something, those things aren't there for them to do, and I think that's the big gap, because I think, you know, people within communities, you know, these people wouldn't be wandering and getting exercise, they would be actually doing some physical activity or something like that. Now, I know our, our local authorities are doing that, but not across the board, and I do think that would make things better for the people who've come to live here, but also for local people as well.
Thank you. Councillor Uberton.
Thank you very much. There is something about the way this is generalised towards anyone not born in this country, and where do you draw that border? Is it between Lincolnshire and Yorkshire? And how, how many generations would you go back? And I think this is why this is a very blunt motion and not very, and perhaps could have been more thoughtful. Many of people in this room are born outside of the country, outside of this country, myself included, and yet we would consider ourselves very proudly British from many generations back. I think also the issue here is about equality and recognition of a, trying to build a community. You said stronger, stronger immigration controls, and you went to the local government minister proposed rather than the immigration minister, but that aside, I think the important point is about, if you did want stronger controls, which ones are you thinking about? Shall we exclude people who are getting married and moving into the area for that? Shall we exclude people who have children in this country or strong family connections? Shall we exclude people who are coming to work in the National Health Service or in the care service? It's really hard to think, who would you exclude? We also have people who fought for the British abroad, shall we exclude them? This is why it is a very blunt approach, and that's why it makes it really quite difficult to support. The point about government funding, the issue with that, it is already included actually, if you take into account need and numbers, because currently funding is calculated on deprivation, and if you've got people coming in who are clearly deprived, then there'll be funding. So I think it's, there is already funding organised for that, and that is an issue that one can continue to put forward. But the point about lumping everybody who's not born in this country as being a burden on our coun, our county is the real difficulty with this. They're also paying your pensions, don't forget, as well, if you've got more younger people working, that's also paying pensions. So there are so many ways in which people who are not born in this county are contributing. We'd have to think very carefully about how to label it.
Could I just, point of order, Chairman? Nowhere in this motion does it state that people currently in this county are a burden. It doesn't state that whether overseas or not. We're talking about additional, extra immigration beyond which is currently happening.
New immigration, not the current immigration. Right, okay. That's, that's interesting.
Point, point of order. Second line of the motion says Lincolnshire's public services, including housing, healthcare and transport, are under increasing strain. What else can one infer from this motion than he is calling them a burden?
Is there a point of order?
Point of order, nowhere either does it say new immigration, it just says 9.4% of Greater Lincolnshire's residents. It doesn't say anything...
It doesn't say anything about new immigration.
Okay, councillor Hill, do you want to come in?
I suggest that members look at the actual resolution. And I say, it does not say anywhere that send people back or anything like that. And I think there is, people are putting words in people's mouths here.
Totally agree.
Point of order, I'm sorry, I don't have said that, it does not say new immigration, it says people born outside of the UK.
We will get a response eventually to this, but I'm sorry, I've got speakers in line and we'll wait. If you wish to indicate the speak, if you've spoken once, that's it. Have you, you were interrupted about three times there. I'll give you 30 seconds to come back on that, Marian.
Very much. The point I'm making is that this is not well put together. There are real holes in this and I think just the fact that there's been such a lot of sudden discussion about what the motion actually means in itself is a problem. So I think, I understand the premise, you know, we do want to make sure that our residents get what they need. But they can't really do that by trying to find a scapegoat elsewhere. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor Brockley.
Thank you, chairman. This is a very interesting situation, actually. My feeling, reading this motion very carefully and reading the words that are written, not adding in emotion around it, perceiving that there are things there that are not there. I see this as something asking for balance and fairness. I don't know if you're aware, but there's been some stuff in the press the last couple of weeks with residents in Wethersfield being very upset. In a village of about 700 people, their 500 migrants are to be raised to approximately 800. And they feel that the balance isn't there. Because it can affect their culture in a way that they, as the local residents, don't want it. So they are raising the questions of balance. It was interesting hearing councillor Young speaking against this because he has recently claimed success at West Lindsay for keeping the migrants out of Scampton. Fought very hard to keep the migrants out of Scampton again. It was an issue of proportion, it was an issue of balance. There would have been twice as many people as in the local village on a road which was dangerous. Nothing socially there for them. It was a bad move. But, you know, he did actually support keeping them out. Something, as somebody who's British born but not English, I'm Welsh. I do find it very interesting, the way the English beat yourselves up over things like, things that other people find acceptable. If I want to fly the Welsh dragon, I'm going to fly it. If an English person puts the English flag up, they're racist. You know, there are things, no, you do see it, you do see it, okay? Or the implication is because the flag has been seized by a certain group attached to them and to their politics. I think what we've got here is a request for balance. And when it comes councillor Baxter, just to assure you about writing to the government, we wrote repeatedly over the last three or four years about the disproportionate use of Scampton. So we have engaged very extensively with the government. I thought about this, can I support this or not? And I decided, if I looked at the words that are written and not the extraneous perceptions, I can support it and that's what I'm going to do.
Councillor Martin-Hill.
Thank you, chairman. I mean, I think there's a lot, as councillor Brockley, there's a lot of emotion here and reading into this, things that aren't there. Nowhere does this motion say anything about pushing people out or blaming anybody for anything. All this motion is about, and I suppose the principle is, do you feel that immigration in this country is too high? And in that case, to this county as well. I don't really understand the Labour Group because their own government is boasting the fact that they want to reduce immigration. So you're obviously at odds with your own government, you know. So it seems to be, it's clear issue here with that, we're not blaming anybody. And I think it is a very well balanced motion. What's being said here, we need to look after those people who are here, but there is a limit. And councillor Baxter talk about extremist parties. Well, the one thing that encourages extremist parties is if everybody else, such as us, pretend there isn't an issue. I think we all know, a lot of people are concerned about this. And the way forward is to make sure that we are fair and we look after people. And if you actually look at the motion, it talks about encouraging people here, already here, to actually integrate. So it's all part of a humane way of dealing with this situation without pretending it doesn't exist at all. And we've had a strong track record as a Conservative group to criticise the Conservative government time after time over the fair funding, over the energy policy. We're not shy in coming forward and I think it's only right. So the issue is if you don't support this motion, which I think is very reasonable, the assumption must be that you are okay for anybody to come in, unlimited immigration. Because that's got to be the logic of what you're saying. Because all that's been said here is we need to control it. Don't say, it doesn't even say stop it, it says control it and manage it. You don't seem to agree with that, so the inference will be members opposite who don't vote for this motion are not quite happy for everybody to come in who wants to come in.
Thank you, just a moment, councillor Murray.
A point of order, chairman. I'd like to call for an apology or a retraction of that final remark. Because that is, you made something up that's not connected to what we said at all. And I think that's entirely wrong and wants correcting, thank you.
Sorry, I'm just looking at recommendation one. Request that the leader of the council writes the Home Secretary urging them to introduce stricter immigration controls to reduce pressure on local services. Thought that's quite clear. If you don't vote for that, you're not in favour of stricter controls.
Absolutely. Thank you, councillor Murray.
Thank you, chairman. I think we've had a really interesting potential future for Lincolnshire, outlined earlier, with robots providing services that are currently provided by foreign people. I just hope that the robots are British. And I can't believe this has come forward today. We've got so many problems in Lincolnshire we need to sort out. The last thing we need to do is pick on people who can't defend themselves. My view, Mr Chairman, is that this is about a competition between the Tory party and Reform UK. And it's going to be fought on May the first. Well, that's what I think. And I think the motion illustrates that. The irony is that when the Tory party were in government until recently, there was an open door policy on immigration. Hundreds of thousands of people came in. And I remember thinking, what's going on? Traditionally, the Tory party have tried to limit immigration, but they didn't. Ironically, the Labour government is. For example, chairman, a few weeks ago, we got information about the number, thousands of people who have been returned to their country of origin because they didn't have a right to stay. And that's right, they shouldn't. If you haven't got a right to stay, you shouldn't stay. But if you apply for asylum, for example, and you're granted asylum, you should be able to stay. And I feel really strongly about this because I know some of the Conservative councillors in here quite well. And I know they're not anti-foreigner, I know they're not racist. And I wish they would decide not to have a fight with Reform UK about who can be the most anti-foreigner, who can be the most anti-immigration. So, Mr Chairman. So, Mr Chairman, what I'd like to do is ask councillor Hill on behalf of the Tory group to withdraw the motion.
Councillor Austin.
Thank you, chairman. Can I just make a comment, please, that the acoustics seem to be appalling in here. Whether it's because I'm sitting at the back and everyone else is in front of me, but I really am struggling to hear and my hearing aids are perfectly good. Okay, thank you. Right, being small, I can talk directly into the microphone, so I will do. I think we've been arguing about, or some people have been arguing about the wording of this. And maybe it could have been better, but I'm not going to volunteer to make it any better. My comments are as follows. I think that what we're concerned about, reading between the lines, is people who come over on spec, be it in small boats, big boats, but they arrive here and then hope there's going to be work. We've had in the past, and someone mentioned Boston, people doing things like in the fields. It's not only in the fields, it's in the packhouses and various other things. But they are doing jobs that maybe local people don't wish to do, but somebody's got to do them. I would hate to be in the nursing profession, but we're grateful to people who come into that. So, you know, we don't complain about them. Now, the, why are people hanging around in the streets? Well, in Boston, I can tell you why. Because they work and then it's not that they don't have anything to do in the rest of the time. It's because unfortunately, hot bedding takes place. And if you don't know what that is, it means that as soon as you get up, someone else comes and uses your bed and you've just got to put up and go outside somewhere. Right, so I don't think that, I'm still absolutely at a loss as to some of this is okay and some of it isn't. So am I going to compromise and vote for this? I've got about, well, I suppose 11 seconds to make my mind up in. Okay. You know, migration has its needs, it has its role. But we've got to, you know, we've got to safeguard against people who are just coming by illegal means. People are exploited to get them here and that's what surely we deplore. Or I do, anyway. I'll stop now and make up my mind how to vote. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Seer.
Thank you, chair, for letting me speak. My, you say foreigner, I come from Yorkshire. Okay? Now, I understand all argument. Let me, let you from the point of the asylum. You have asylum, the people come, who not genuine asylum. If you come asylum to stay in a hotel or hostel, what being put by? You're not allowed to work. Okay, you're not allowed to work. The asylum, they're like, who come to Boston, they're not asylum, they got like to work. If you pop asylum, the young man, I have nothing against it, but I work again. The young people, you know, like seem to be this asylum, they are not allowed to work. They hang out the street and they're being put off, like rural area, Skegness. I know members of try to have some. But if you pop asylum, you have to report to the police station once a week. Where local area, you don't have police station. I bet you didn't know that because I deal with a lot of asylum in the past before I moved to Lincolnshire. My point is, we, because like nurse care, they got like to come to work because they got proper paper. But if you are asylum, you don't have a paper, you waiting to be, you know, contact six month. Then the taxpayer who will pay of your keeping. That's, I think, time enough is enough. Because in this country, I mean, I call myself bitter, whatever, I'm tired, I live here over 45 year. Some of you even never born. So I pay enough tax and national insurance and I think, enough is enough to support. Not genuine asylum, okay? You look at the news, somebody, they are asylum, there'll be something, they're doing the bomb, they go out and kill some people. That's not right. I have nothing against the nerd professional or people work who foreigner, because I'm the foreigner. But I live here. The paperwork different. I think indeed the motion to go, to tie it up, to make sure government agree to not allow any more legal who not got like to be here. Because we are bitter, so soft, allow these people. I spoke to them, why you, I was in Dover, I asked, why you want to come to UK? She said, it's a gold mine. So I can get the passport, I can get the work and I can go and get my mum, my wife and that come here.
Thank you councillor Seer.
And that like, thank you. That's what I say, you have to think carefully first.
Thank you very much, thank you. Councillor Dokes. You don't need to stand up. Can you sit down councillor Dokes and take it from there?
I'm so sorry. Oh, no, no, it's fine, I can stand, it's okay, Karen, thank you. Sorry, excuse me, chairman. I had no intention of speaking this morning. But when I hear talk about pure yellow bellies from Yorkshire or Lincolnshire, it doesn't matter where, you know, we really are talking, you know, and then we hear about all this emotions on this side of the debate, well, I've got to, I had to stand up. I just find it absolute, this is a Conservative motion. And I've yet, it is, as councillor Baxter said, the worst motion I've seen on this council, not just in the four years he's been here, but in all the years I've been here since 2001, with a couple of gaps, I've got to say. But the hypocrisy, the hypocrisy, the absolute hypocrisy of Conservatives who, you know, trying to tell us, yes, the new Labour government has to tighten up immigration. After the last year of their rule, they allowed legal immigration, three quarters of a million. Three quarters of a million. We talk about the small boats, the small boats is a tiny problem compared to that. And absolutely, you know, it's, I think Karen Lee said it was, there's 88,000 since the Rwanda that came in on small boats. That is, you know, 10% roughly of the three quarters of a million that were allowed in and encouraged and welcomed in by the previous government. And yet we're being told that the new government, that inherited a totally broken immigration, migration system, they virtually stopped dealing with the backlog of migration applications. Well, they did, Tricia, it's absolute fact. They just were not, that's why the hotels were full and we were spending nine million a week, was it, a month? I can't remember what it was, a lot of money on it. Now, why will I not be voting for this motion? Well, particularly, I won't be voting for it because of item two. And it calls for a review of funding formulas to ensure areas experiencing the greatest impact from migration receive additional government support. Councillor Bradwell has just told us, as councillor Cleaver did, that we are not one of those areas. So, you know, get real, frankly. I went to the NHS, as you can probably tell, and yes, what other people have said. Finally though, I do want to say about what councillor Hill said, I found it really offensive, Martin, I've got to say, for you to say that anyone who doesn't support this wants to open the doors to anybody coming into this country.
Thank you councillor Dokes.
And by the way, I will always fly the Union flag of this country. Thank you.
So say we all. Councillor Davy.
Thank you, thank you, chairman. Immigration has always been a huge issue for the British people. And it's got to be balanced and it's got to be fair. And, you know, I don't see colour, I don't see creed, I don't see any of those things, I only see people and talent. And that's what I look at. I look at whether people contribute, I look at people on merit. And, you know, we have an issue with the British people, the perception of immigration. And whether that's the fault of the media as much as anybody else. You know, we have conflict in our society. We need a better society that understands these things and addresses them differently. You know, so making the point to government about immigration. And let me be very clear, I made plenty of comments to the previous government about what they got wrong. And they got plenty of stuff wrong around immigration. And it goes back 20 years, let's be honest, immigration policy is a basket case. Home Office hasn't done what it's supposed to do. And we have this conflict in society now. And we have to, we have to keep reminding government of what their responsibilities are. You know, it doesn't take away the fact that other people have failed before them. And we've got to remember that when we talk about people for the care sector and the health service, all these people that come here, we're gutting the countries they come from of their health services. You know, 70% of the hospitals in Nigeria are not populated with enough people to look after their own population because they're all over here or in the Middle East or, you know, the people from the- Or, you know, the people from the Philippines have been dragged into Australia and Japan. You know, so immigration has a global impact as well. And we need to recognise this. There is going to come a point very soon, and I'm hearing this from around the world, we will not be getting more people for the carers and the health service in this country because those countries are going to stop it happening. They're going to stop us taking their people, their best people, and bringing them to this country. We need a policy of improving the stock of our working population here so they can deliver the services we need. We need to stop relying on immigration to service our economy and start making sure our economy functions in the way it should do. So, from my perspective, it's right that we remind government of the pressures on services. It's right that we support this motion in that regard. But I've got to say that, you know, we need to take the heat out of this. The people of Lincolnshire are really concerned about this issue. It's a doorstep issue across my whole division. They always say immigration, cost of living, those are the two issues that come up. You know, and we have to address that. And I'll be very clear, I mean, there is no political party, Reform included, that has any policy about how they're actually going to rebalance society, remigrate those who are here illegally and we should do so. So let's have a, let's try and take the heat out of this. It's important to remind government that we should do so.
Thank you. Now councillor Skinner has reserved the right to speak before I bring councillor Macy back in to sum up. councillor Skinner.
Thank you very much. I've learnt a lot about this motion I seconded along the way. It mainly remains that, to be honest, I've listened to a lot of things that's not written down on this paper. From the point of view of when I was leader at Boston, very much pressures on local services when, you know, you're indicated of 65,000 and you've got 80,000 people to provide for. That's what this says. It says, let's look at the funding formula. It doesn't say anything about people not being here or whatever. It very much says that. It says very much about looking after local people with housing, training. And I would actually add ex-military service personnel as well because a lot of our councils have signed up to the pledge to look after them. So I remember going up to the immigration board and with Tricia and talking about Leicester and Nottingham and Boston. And we were at a stage where our once a week market bus was actually knocked back to twice. You know, a fortnight a bus. So the people in Leicester and Nottingham were having a job actually comprehending the fact that you get one bus a fortnight, not one every hour. So, you know, that's, this to me is about funding, numbers and good housekeeping. It's not about some of the things the members opposite. Yes, the NHS is under stress. When they set Bicker up, I remember getting some very irate letters from local doctors saying that they were going to, and why hadn't I told them? You know, the day after, I got to know. And the Home Office hadn't notified police, they hadn't notified. So there's some common factors here. We've got the same border force, we've got the same Home Office. It's really how do we get them to do best? And just to finish off, I can remember, we talk about the situation we inherited. I can remember a government taking on a note from the Chancery that said, we're actually skint chaps, you know, we run out of money. What did they do? They didn't actually moan about that. They actually cracked on and made something out of it. And if we go back to Chancellor Brown, he actually took 20% of our medical schools, 20% of the places, 16, 17 years ago. That's quite a lot of doctors and quite a lot of careers that wasn't supported by the previous Labour government. So I will be supporting this. Thank you, chair.
Thank you. councillor Macy, would you like to sum up?
Yeah, thank you. I won't take long and I want to thank everyone for their part in this debate, to be fair, and hearing the balance there. Because as councillor Brockway hit the nail on the head, this is about balance. And it's the balance of having, you know, control over our migration. If you look at other countries all across the world, they've got that balance, they've got it right. We don't seem to have that at the moment. And, you know, in all likelihood, controlled migration, I think is a fantastic thing. You know, if you've got skilled workers coming in and doing the part, to play a part of this country, fantastic. It's those that come here and they don't plan on working, they don't want to contribute to this country or the community. And that is where the problem lies, I feel, at the moment in time. This is something that really does affect my residents. As councillor Davy has alluded to, it's something that gets raised with me on an absolute daily basis. It affects their lives. They, you know, are struggling with their cost of living. They need help and they're seeing that, you know, this sort of helps going elsewhere at the moment. I just think that needs to be rectified. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we're going to move to the votes. So all those in favour, please show. All those against? Any abstentions? That is carried. Thank you. And that concludes our meeting. Just remind you to take your paperwork from your pigeonholes before you go in the members' room. Thank you very much.